Okay, it's 6:00 PM and we'll call the regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission being held on Thursday, February 20th to order. And we will begin with a roll call. So Marisol, if you'd please do that.
Commissioner Woolley?
Present.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Prue?
Present.
Vice Chair DeRosa?
Here.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and we'd like to also recognize that we have two visiting council members here this evening. Councilmember Bassina and Councilmember Bedford and our council liaison Kathy Adams here. We appreciate your being here with us and also our town attorneys here with us this evening. We appreciate that. Well, now, if you'd please rise, Commissioner Lehman is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, where it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is Call to the Public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And just note that if you're here for the agenda item dealing with Anthem, that will be a public hearing, so you'll have an opportunity to speak then as well, but you can speak now as well. So if anybody here in the audience would like to address the commission at this point in time, please come forward and state your name.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, I'm Les Buckner. I live in Sun City, and I just have a few questions with respect to the plans for the east side of Felix. I'd like to know, have Pulte provide some information as to how many of the 3,290 homes they plan there will be 55-plus relative to how and how many homes are going to be like on Parkside? Is there going to be a split? And is the plan that these homes will become a part of Sun City Anthem and Parkside HOAs thus access and use the existing amenities that we already have in place on the west side of Felix? Will there be a pedestrian tunnel under Felix similar to the tunnel that goes under Hunt Highway so that families or people don't necessarily have to cross Felix? Then they mentioned that there are 97 lots had been moved from the east side of Felix. I'd like to understand how many of those were moved from Sun City over to the east And then what will the total number of homes be in Sun City Anthem? So including any 55-plus homes on the east side and everything that we currently have on the west side? And then I would say, given that that many of the current Sun City Anthem amenities are already close to capacity with only about 50% build-outs thus far, what are Pulte's plans to address the need for expanded amenities? I know there's additional open space on the east side that they mentioned in their plan, but I would say that that's probably more the result of only being able to transfer 97 homes to stay within the 11,172 limit in the putt. So it was great, but I didn't see anything in there that speaks to amenities. And I think it would be helpful to us to understand before we go too far. And then I would just say that the open space is great, but open space is not equal to amenities that the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hopefully, Pulte presenters, when you heard those questions, hopefully you can bring up a lot of those answers in your presentation. Okay? Is anyone online that would like to? One hand raised. Courtney Ramirez, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening Commissioners. It's nice to see residents here as well. But yeah, I had some of the same questions. The report was a little confusing, and we would like to know how many homes are projected in this new plot here for tonight? And also, is this part of that big Eldorado Holdings sale that just recently happened? I'd like to know that as well. In the report, it states that this developer is going to widen Felix Road. And if that is true, is that the entire way from Arizona Farms to Hunt Highway? The math I'm mathing here, just kind of, I'm kind of confused with the report. Am I understanding this is going to bring 13,000, over 13,000 or 44,000 people in this one unit we're talking about tonight? These numbers are scary. Pulte brought in over $17 billion in revenue last year. You know, there's a mess of roadways in Maricopa. There's that saying that says insanity is doing the same things over and over expecting different results. Well, Florence is at capacity with roads, and we keep building and building, and all these developers keep coming to us. And I ask these developers, what are you going to do? You developers know that we are begging and pleading for help with our roads that is years out. Everybody's store crap for money, the government, et cetera. I ask you developers, what are you guys going to do to help fix this road situation that your high-density housing is bringing to this little bitty town? There are tons of accidents constantly at Hunt Highway. And again, this is all about planning, and we need to do what's best for this little town. And yes, we're growing, but again, it's about growing smart, right? So I ask these developers, you know, pitch in some with these roads. And that means Hunt Highway, Felix, Arizona Farms, like your neighborhoods are going to be bringing people on all these roads that right now there is no money for, yet you guys keep wanting to come in and build and build and build. So I'd love to say stop, halt, halt all the growth until we get these roads under control. That's a wish, a lot of us wish for, and it's sad to see all this coming. We need help with our roads, and it's about safety. So this is scary, and so many people are really upset about this growth that's happening. I wish you guys luck, and developers, we want some money. We want help with these roads.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. We appreciate that. Is anyone else in the audience? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
You want me to shut up here?
And you have three minutes.
My name's Ed Meyer. I live in Anthem as well. I just have two quick recommendations if they're not already being addressed, and I haven't looked at this far enough to know the details. But when we talk about amenities, right now, the Union Center at Anthem is just packed. It can't handle anything. And that means that at some point, there's going to have to be room set aside for future buildings, future whatever the amenities may be. And I don't see that reflected. I see open space reflected, but if we're choosing possible locations for expanded facilities at some point, we need to plan for the utilities and all of the infrastructure that supports that, not just a general infrastructure statement. And then secondly, and I don't know again, but I'm assuming these roads are going to be turned over to Florence, as was the situation where I live in Anthem. I was also a city manager and a planning commission chairman in another community, and we had a similar situation where the roads simply didn't hold up because they were not properly inspected. There was no bonding provided to assure that the utility crossings would be compacted. And what's now, if you go out into the community, you go through these roads, and there's huge gaps, you know, six, eight, 10. And Florence City is having to pay for those costs, and so they're occurring somewhat slowly. I hope that the subdivision ordinance, or if there's anything you can do in the subdivision review strengthens the requirements for an independent auditor, and perhaps there's some money to be set aside for future repairs if the job isn't done correctly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I'm going to ask our staff, because we've had this discussion before. What's the definition of high-density housing?
Mr. Chair, are we public comment section?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we don't have any, we can't have discussion in the public comment section. We can only respond to criticism, so maybe that's an issue that could be brought up during the presentation.
I'm just doing what it says right here. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. That's all I'm doing. I just want the definition, because that definition is, those words have been used many times, and I don't believe that that's the case here. So I'm asking that we have the definition of high-density housing.
Are you saying in response to criticism?
I'm responding to the criticism that was made by one of these citizens of the town.
I defer to the chair on whether you deem that criticism, but I'm just saying, the general rule is, we can only respond to criticism at the end of public comment, ask staff to review an issue, or ask staff to put something on a future agenda. That's all that can be done during a public comment portion of the agenda.
That's a good question. Let's hold that until later.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, anyone else here would like to speak to us? Courtney, I see your hand's still raised, but you've got your three minutes, so I don't want to get confused here. Okay, we'll close the call to public. Next item of business is discussion approval or disapproval of the minutes of the regular meeting conducted on February 6, 2025. Commission members, any comments, concerns?
No.
Okay. No concerns or comments? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Pro and a second from Commissioner Lehman for approval of the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have five ayes there, Marisol. Okay, new business, 6A. This is a presentation which includes a public hearing, approval with conditions or denial of a preliminary plat for the planned unit development known as Anthem at Merrill Ranch located east of Felix Road and north of Hunt Highway, known as PZ-24-37. Staff report.
Before I pass this presentation over to the developers for tonight, I'd like to give a quick overview from staff for the preliminary plat at Anthem at Merrill Ranch. This map here shows where it's at currently. It is east of Felix and north of Hunt Highway. It contains that whole highlighted area, and that is what that preliminary plat shows the lots for, as well as the roads. The Anthem at Merrill Ranch, east of Felix preliminary plat is a residential development, and it's covering approximately 983 acres. The site currently consists of undeveloped land except for areas where it has the APS substation, the electrical utilities, and partly paved Merrill Ranch Parkway. The site consists, the site falls under the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Planned Unit Development. This is not part of the Merrill Ranch Eldorado Holdings. It's all under Anthem. It's not, doesn't have to do with Eldorado Holdings. And the PUD document that it falls under is the 208, the 2008 version of it, and that is the latest, which allows for flexibility within the residential unit allocation. The extension of this community aims to continue the single-family subdivision that is seen on the west side. It proposes 3,290 lots, and they vary in size between 4,700 and 7,200 square feet. And this will occur over several phases. This is not all going to happen at once. At the time this is the middle, the plat had to undergo the town's current preliminary plat process, which includes staff review, review by the technical advisory committee, which includes department heads from each staff section, and then it goes to Planning and Zoning Commission for review and action. The Anthem at Merrill Ranch PUD includes that the addition has to go and have a public hearing, and that is specifically stated on, I believe, page 39 of the PUD. And the document also does not require for the preliminary plat to go to the town council for final approval, as it has its own process within it, and that one we refer to unless the PUD refers to the Towns Code, in which this one it doesn't. So we do not go to town council. The preliminary plat will have its final action here at Planning and Zoning Commission. Through the technical advisory committee, we met with the applicants on November 20th of 2024 to review this application. Some items that were discussed during that review were some lot divisions were originally omitted from the pages, and that was remedied within the second submittal. The available amenities that were possible were a concern that we had. Comments also included secondary accesses as it went through its phases of development, and that was for fire and police department. And they met with fire several times after the technical advisory committee in order to remedy that situation, and that's why you see pages with extra fire secondary access. That completes my presentation. I'll now turn it over to the applicant.
If you would, please introduce yourself and your team members that you have here with you.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Joshua Robinson. We are the civil engineers on the project. Collier's Engineering and Design, formerly known as Hilgarth Wilson. To my right, we have Pulte Group, Todd Nap, Jeff Luke. We have Jared Baxter, civil engineer that is, thank you, that's currently working on Anthem Merrill Ranch, west of Felix Road. And then Ryan Wilk, landscape architect. Thank you, Marisol. I just wanted to add a couple things based off the previous slides. We're dealing with a site that is approximately 930 acres, gross acres. Based off of the latest preliminary plat, we've actually reduced the lots to 3,137, to be exact. And through that analysis, that equates to approximately about a 3.37 dwellings per acre density. What's unique about this project in particular is the orientation of the lots and the vast amount of open space that we do provide. It's actually a unique land plan that is rare in nature due to, there's not a single rear-to-rear lot condition. There's approximately 340 acres of open space across this entire community with four miles, a little over four miles of open space trails. And so in order to achieve a non-rear-to-rear condition, we have what we call passeos that are provided in the back of each of these lots. And they range anywhere from 30 to 50 feet in width. Throughout the neighborhood, you'll see here in the green asterisks, a variety of neighborhood parks. Let's see, how do I go down? Nope. There we go. Neighborhood parks that provide amenities such as play structures, green space, just areas to hang out, ramadas, barbecues. I'm actually going to come back to that one. And I wanted to touch on kind of the nature of these neighborhood parks and how this community to the east of Felix is an extension of Anthem Merrill Ranch, west of Felix Road. So it is, as a whole, that you see here, this is an exhibit that's part of the PUD that was processed back in 2005 initially, and then amended in 2008. So this is the overall PUD exhibit, and as you can see, we have copper railroad rail to the east here. The piece that was alluded to earlier, the Eldorado purchase, that is over here to the east, that is not a part of this PUD. But there is a component that ties into it that I'll touch on here in just a short while as it deals with the water campus and ultimately the water reclamation facility. But sticking to the amenities and the trail systems, there is, like I said, about four miles of trails in its entirety that actually provides great connectivity to the existing community and amenities that exist today. And while we recognize that there are growing concerns about capacity of the amenity site, there are, you know, there is about 16 acres set aside within Anthem Merrill Ranch that is slated for an expansion, and I think that was done purposely in that we can gather feedback as we progress through this development and over the years. Knowing that Anthem Merrill Ranch originated 20 years ago, it's a growing community, and this community east of Felix is another 3,100 lots that it's going to take time. And so I think that's, it's necessary to gather that feedback and strategically plan what we should utilize and provide within that 16 acres west of Felix Road. There was another comment about the underpass. Bear with me, I apologize. There is a, I don't have it. There is a pedestrian corridor, and actually, the pedestrian underpass underneath Felix, half of it exists today, and it's approximately in this location here. I know you guys can't see my cursor, but, or no, just south of it. I apologize. And I know some of you live in the community, so. It provides a direct line of pedestrian connectivity that'll be a concrete pedestrian pathway directly to the amenity site from this area here. Moving on to just the overall organic nature of the roadways that we see here and the site in its entirety, we worked with Jennifer Peel Davis, the fire marshal, on fire access throughout the preliminary plat process and came up with a total of, well, there's a total of four permanent fire access ways, which is an all-weather road access that provides very similar gates to what you see in Anthem Merrill Ranch today. Because it is a phased overall development, there's a total of four phases. Phase one is what you see here on the screen that is highlighted in kind of this bold black color. You'll see a series of what are orange colors. These are your temporary fire access points, and they're temporary in nature because as the future phases are built, the second points of access are provided, and so they're no longer needed. However, when you get to the south side of the project near Hunt Highway, and north is to the right, I apologize, you'll see that there are two permanent access ways that venture out to Hunt Highway itself, this being phase two. Infrastructure, there's a pretty significant amount of infrastructure in place for this community, not just the roadways themselves, but Felix Road will be expanded to its ultimate roadway section of 135-foot right-of-way. That is the major arterial that you see down here with three lanes of traffic in each direction. Signals placed at Anthem Merrill Ranch Parkway and Felix Road, as well as Felix and Hunt Highway, as well as Felix and what we are calling Collector Two in the traffic study. Those three signals are warranted once phase one is brought online. So there are additional signals that are warranted at later phases. The traffic impact study speaks to really three years, 2028, 2034, and 2040 is the horizon year. And so you'll see that there are additional signals that are brought on at various collector roads within the community and Anthem Merrill Ranch Parkway itself, as well as the widening of Hunt Highway, which this is the ultimate roadway section for ADOT. Continuing with the infrastructure, this is an overall master plan that we've prepared, and this actually incorporates the Eldorado piece from a master plan level because we need to understand water and wastewater and understand how it's going to be routed and designed, not to just this phase, but to look to the future communities as well. You'll see down here, south of Hunt Highway, there's a green star. This is the wastewater master report. This green star represents a water reclamation facility that will start construction sometime around the middle of next year. Switching over to the water master plan, very similar to the wastewater, there is a component of working with the Eldorado property as well. This blue asterisk that you see here is a preliminary placement for the water campus that will also start construction sometime next year. I'm going to keep this exhibit up. I think it's helpful to speak to the north-south corridor as well, or what some like to call the ghost corridor.
Ghost corridor.
And you'll notice that it's not reflected in the preliminary plat. We did that purposely mainly because in reviewing the Tier One report for ADOT, we noticed that, and this report was published in 2021, we noticed that there were seven different alternatives for the alignment, and one of the alternatives actually showed the north-south corridor further to the east, and can't see my cursor that well, but it actually moves off of our property, east of our property. And in reviewing the Town of Florence general plan, it actually mimics what ADOT called 3A in their Tier One report. They've since moved into a Tier Two report, and that Tier Two report actually stops the corridor alignment right now, stops north of our community, and does not continue yet. It is still in design, hence the ghost nature of it. Touching on the school site and circling back to the PUD, there was originally a plan for two school sites throughout the Anthem Merrill Ranch community. One is in existence today, which I think most are familiar with. The second is actually no longer needed per the Chief Financial and Operation Officer of the Florence Unified School District, and this is a letter that he provided as well that just spoke to the horizon year of the need, or the potential need, I should say, of those two schools. of the need, or the potential need, I should say, of those two school sites. And the horizon year being fifteen years after that date of two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. So technically, we had a conversation, or Polte had a conversation with the Unified School District dating back to two thousand and twenty-three. And the Unified School District deemed that the school was no longer needed on this site. And so for those reasons and tied to the agreement in section A, it states that if the school site and the Unified School District deem that the site is no longer needed, it can be used for alternative purposes. I'm going to go back one slide. I think it's important to study this area to the east as well. We're also the planners on this project and working with that developer. There is actually another school site that is proposed at the time, and it's going to be very similar to, I think, other projects of this magnitude that are set aside for, again, if the Unified School District deems that the school site is necessary in the future, there is a parcel set aside east of this community. In addition to that, there are two public safety sites that are located east of the Copper Basin Rail that are also set aside today. With that, I'm going to pause. I covered quite a bit and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Let me see if we addressed some questions that came up earlier. Could you address the ninety-seven lots and that process of moving? That was a question that was brought up earlier.
Yeah, the ninety-seven lots, I will be honest, I'm a little perplexed on that.
Jared Baxter, Baxter's I Group. Nice to be in front of you, Commission, at this point in time. So what we have here is we have a total of eleven thousand some odd, two hundred lots, I believe, which is approved in the PUD. And the PUD addressed that, it's unknown kind of where these lots are going to be placed, one way or the other. We have a max that we can hit and we are well below that maximum amount of lots, even with this new pre-plat that we're presenting right now. We're more than a thousand lots short of what that total allowable density was as far as lots in the community. So being able to, it's not really a transfer because we're not transferring. We have an overall lotting that's allowed for the whole PUD and we're well with, well below that. So really what we've done, per the PUD, some of the parcels got less dense on the west side of Felix and that the lots, the ninety-seven or ninety-six lots we're talking about right now, really were just applied over to the other side. But I want to note that, per the PUD, we are more than a thousand lots short of the maximum number that's approved through the original PUD. So I wouldn't really consider it a transfer. It's a reallocation from when the PUD was originally developed, from one side to the other, but really the PUD encompasses this entire area that we're addressing right now. So I just want the Commission to know that we're well, well, well below what was the maximum density over here. So I don't necessarily like that word, transfer lots, one way or the other. It's probably just a reallocation of the maximum lots densities that we have available per the PUD.
That was a bit confusing. Another question that came up was, will the east side retain the fifty-five-plus restriction on the area north of Merrill Ranch Parkway?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. So active adult is actually planned north of Merrill Ranch Parkway. So you can see here where it says Sheets Two, Three, and Four. So it's this area up here, everything south of Merrill Ranch Parkway. I don't have the lot count, but I can get that to you before I leave today. It's shown on our preliminary plat and a table on the cover sheet, but everything north of Merrill Ranch Parkway is active adult, everything south is single family.
How many lots is that?
That's what he's going to look up. You're going to find out how many lots.
Yeah, the total is thirty-one, thank you.
Yeah, that's the number I want.
Total is thirty-two ninety. How much for Sun City and how much for Parkside?
So the total is thirty-one thirty-seven. It's actually been revised based off of further preliminary plat comments and kind of shifting of open space and retention.
Can we have that put to the record, please?
If I could just step in on that, this, sorry. Todd Nap with Polte Homes, Vice President.
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Todd Nap.
Thank you.
So the ability to provide active adult and single family, as Josh has described, that's how the original community has been planned, that, you know, within the PUD, it explains that there is active adult and there are single-family homes. There's no commitment to where or how many. So we don't know that answer right now, frankly.
Yet if you look at your lots, on the north side of that, they are even-numbered, as is Sun City side, and on the other side, they're odd numbers, which is how you number Parkside. So I kind of just made the assumption that the even numbers would be Sun City and the odd numbers would be Parkside.
Yeah, that's in a suit observation, frankly, nice job. That, we have used those odds and evens internally for when we do some of our planning and even home construction starts and things, those numbers were tied just as a point of reference as whether that's a active adult home or it's a Parkside home. That's, it's just a convention that's used internally for our own purposes, that doesn't commit that that's in fact how they'll always be.
So the east side of Anthem now, Sun City side, at build-out on that side, I believe there'll be four thousand homes. What will the total Sun City side be when it comes to rooftops?
On the east or the west?
The east. Well, both of them actually, because part of the west side will be Sun City homes. So what do you anticipate the build-out for Sun City in its entirety?
Yeah, again, we don't know those numbers. Initially, the property was about fifty-fifty is kind of what was originally planned. That's how the original community was laid out. Again, we have a lot of development to do here and market conditions to experience. As far as naming that, a hundred percent today, we're not prepared to do that.
So if you don't know how much, how many rooftops you're going to have in Parkside, are you projecting playground space for children who may never happen because you won't have enough rooftops for them? Versus Sun City side, you don't know how many rooftops you'll have there either, so what will the amenity package need to be to accommodate those homeowners also?
Yeah, so using the fifty-fifty rule that I described before, the amenities for the active adults, well frankly, the amenities for both groups have been pre-programmed, as Josh had described earlier, you know, on the west side of the property to accommodate the respective residents in total count.
But you don't know what the total count will be?
That's still under review.
Okay, so now at least I understand that it's not a hard and fast number, or a hard and fast boundary, that Merrill Ranch Parkway is a divider, it could divide, like, and I guess.
Potential, I mean, today, that's the conventional wisdom on the project.
And I guess what kind of spurred my thought process on there is when I look at Park Number One, it has playground amenities in it, which is, you know, fifty-five-plus areas. That's why it got me really confused here.
Yeah, no, fair point. Those are sample open space uses described there. We don't have plans that will actually be built to that right this minute. They're just kind of depiction of an open space.
Okay, so I guess as we fine-tune this, and we'll see it again as you further fine-tune this, you'll adjust the amenities to match the age group that will be living there?
Yeah, as has been described already, the amenity package for the community is west of Felix. And then the open spaces that have been provided here, east of Felix, in fact, exceed what was originally planned on, in the PUD east of Felix.
And I'm thinking of amenity in the bigger picture, not just the activity center and the ball fields associated with it. I'm thinking of amenities that people can walk to with their children or whatnot, as you spaced out through these areas that you're calling open space.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pro.
Yes, in the plan, I don't see any space allocated to commercial amenities. For example, you know, a pizza place or places where people can gather for coffee or tea or get an ice cream cone. I don't see any of that in any of these plans. And I'm worried about that because, you know, now, with the way the situation is now, we drive fifteen miles to get a pizza, so on. So why isn't, why aren't commercial amenities in this plan?
Yeah, Dell Webb originally set aside the commercial site at Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway, and that's the primary commercial that has been contributed by the builder for this region.
So can't that be, you know, amended or expanded? Because realistically, well, one thing, there's not much there right now, except a, you know, coffee place and a grocery store and two auto things.
Yeah, it's not currently contemplated to expand that. That's the area that's been allowed for.
How do we include that in the plan going forward?
Sorry, I keep jumping up here. I apologize right here. So the commercial corridors were set up at the initial planning of the PUD and assessed at that point in time. And if you look, Polte donated a property where the, where this, this, sorry, sorry. Polte donated property or developed property where the Safeway is right now. But if you'll notice on that corner, all four corners of that intersection are set up for commercial use on that area right there. So when the PUD was set up, that was the commercial core right there, was at Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway. In addition to that, which is not part of the Anthem and Merrill Ranch PUD, there is commercial corners designated as part of the Eldorado holdings on Hunt Highway and Felix Road, at the intersection of Hunt Highway and Felix Road. So that's where the commercial corridors were set up, or commercial cores were set up at this point in time when the PUD was amended. And if you recognize right now, we finally have a Circle K going in on the northwest corner that's been built in a couple of years ago. And there's additional commercial areas around that northern corridor right there. But I want to stress that over on Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway, there's still two twenty-plus acre parcels south of that, on both the east side and the west side of Hunt Highway, that are designated as commercial corridors or commercial core groups right there. So when the PUD was set up, those were the two locations where the commercial areas were being set up to be developed in the future.
That's it, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to yield my time to the Commissioners on the other side, Mr. Willie and Mr. Lehman, but as long as Mr. Baxter is here, I do have a question. As Mr. mentioned, retail, and yet Polte has taken some retail property that you had in your original plat, that was medical retail around the hospital, and you've turned them into lots for residential. Why was that done?
Approved PUD, that medical center wasn't even a part of the approved PUD.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry, the medical, where the hospital is at right now, not a part of the original PUD. That was a parcel.
The lots around the hospital were originally zoned.
As a medical facilities, yes, medical offices are potential right there, and there was an option for the hospital to develop those. That option expired. Polte's not in the medical business right now, so it was always an option to develop it back to lots. But I want to stress on the original PUD that was approved, that was all lotting that was done before. So that's where some of that density that we said, the transfer or the reallocation of density, really, that's kind of where those ninety-six lots came from originally that got moved over to the east side of Felix Road.
Okay, as long as you're out here, may I suggest, respectfully suggest you drive over those lots by the hospital? Because I'm here to tell you, they back up directly to the hospital and when that helicopter takes off, I wouldn't want to be in my backyard, but I'll address other questions later.
That is an amen, that is a feature that Polte has to deal with as far as sell those lots in those houses right there. Yes, there is an approved helicopter pad on the hospital, which I've been out there during construction and everything. I totally recognize your concern. And basically, we, Polte went above and beyond from the original PUD because we recognized the sense, we had a partner at that point in time, Giller Hospital, that came in and we had parcels set aside, not only for the hospital, but also for medical offices around there too. They did not finish their commitment to develop that as part of the purchase agreement. Polte absorbed those back in and we are a home builder. And so that's what was originally plotted, originally planned in the PUD, and that's what we went back to. But your concern is valid. I'm not saying it's not a concern. It's something those homeowners are going to have to.
And it would have been nice if Polte would have put in offices because you would have filled them with medical people, especially as the community grows.
Agreed, but I also want to stress when we were talking about commercial corners, north of the hospital is another commercial corner that's zoned commercial, where the current, the new Florence, the new ALA High School was built, that was also zoned as a commercial piece at one point in time. It just has not developed that way, one way or the others type stuff. So even on, you look at the original PUD where we have the ALA, call it K-38 school, that was not part of the original PUD. That was carved out to provide another option for education in the community too. So Polte has kind of went above and beyond as the development's happening right now to try to provide those corridors there at that point in time, but can't control where the commercial are coming down there one way or the other. It's not in the Polte business to control that one way. But there are parcels set aside for it.
I understand that, and I understand it takes rooftops before retail will come in or restaurants will come in. I understand how that works.
And I recognize, I mean, I've been here since two thousand and five when the original development started. So I do recognize there are stuff that has been moved around, but really, we've added the restaurant to the golf course, which was never a plan originally in the PUD. And then part of that too is we've carved out where the Safeway is and that commercial corner right there, which was owned by Polte, but we did carve that out for commercial and even subsidized that for a number of years to get the commercial in here at one point in time.
And the homeowners appreciate that, and you've just sold it, so we understand.
But we fully recognize that that's a concern. I just wanted to point out where there are commercial corridors or commercial cores set up adjacent or nearby the community itself right now.
I'll yell to Mr. Willie and Mr. Lehman and then come back.
Do you want to go first?
Go ahead.
All right. First, let me just say that I am not against growth in this community. What I am against is what I would refer to as rushed growth. We need to be managing this growth properly. Way back when Anthem first came to this area, I was on P&amp;Z, I was part of that whole PUD process that you guys did. And what I see today seems to be not the Polte we dealt with back when we first opened up Anthem. So with that said, I've got a few things here that I wanted to discuss and ask questions about. First one is really just a statement. The density, I hate using the word high because it may not translate to high, but the density that you guys are proposing east of Felix Road is not the density that we all moved to Anthem for. We all moved to Anthem because of the open trails and the open space, all these different reasons. This looks more like a community that you would find in Pinell County, unincorporated areas where they're jamming as many houses into a small area as they can. So I just, if you guys can think about that, that doesn't reflect what Anthem came to Florence originally with, the lifestyle that you were presenting to us, okay? So I'll move on to the next one because I don't want to beat that to death. You guys answered the second one about Sun City, Parkside. I don't see anything showing the roadwork expansion of, for Felix Road. The document says that Polte is liable, but not indicating on any map what the plan is. There's just nothing showing it. And I have some concern with that because the young man here presented tonight that it'll be expanded to three lanes on either side. But we don't see that in the preliminary plat. We don't see where you guys are showing us that or anything. And my concern is, three lanes are great going up Felix Road. I think it's an awesome idea till you get to the railroad track, which is single-ruled lane crossing. Now, I understand that that's not directly your responsibility, but it is Polte's responsibility to work with the railroad, to ensure that we're not going to build this three-lane road on either side and jam up a road that's already overused and create a bottleneck three, four, or five times a day depending on the traffic flow. So I didn't know. So I didn't notice any of that being addressed as part of this whole preliminary process. Got to, I'm not going to beat this one to death everybody else has so far, but there's no amenities. And when you look, there's pocket parks, but pocket parks are not amenities. Those are just places for people to sit or swing on a swing, okay? Again, we chose the lifestyle up here at Anthem for a reason. That's why we let you guys come to our community way back in 2004 was because of the lifestyle that you were offering. Seems rushed again and seems really dense where we could be offering more amenities or open space. So with that said, the school district is refusing to, well, not refusing, they're saying they don't need it. Why do we have to jam houses in there? Why can't we build amenities on that property instead? More soccer fields, more whatever it takes, because we have a lot of pedestrians that are not going to use that little tunnel. A lot of them are going to be crossing at the major streets. We're going to have 3,137 homes going into that whole area. A lot of those are going to be children walking to school. A lot of those are going to be kids going to soccer fields for their club soccers. There's a lot of things that come with having the amenities in the area. Now we're asking them to cross a three-lane on both side roadway. It's becoming a dangerous issue. So I'd like you to think about the possibility of somehow putting some amenities on that side of the road so that we don't have to have a safety issue. Let's see. Okay, next one is the expansion of Felix. There seems to be a general history going around Pinell County where we let developers come in first, we let them build, then we let them expand the roads. It's not working. If you guys live down here, the town manager can account for this too. We're having an increase of accidents because the roads are too busy, they're too small, they're not designed for the amount of traffic. When do you guys anticipate that you will be starting this expansion? Before Phase One or after the first house sells in Phase One or after Phase One is complete? Because it might be too late. So I'd like you to take that into consideration also. Let's see. That can wait.
So that's, that's a good question. You want to just answer that one?
Yeah.
What are the roads phased?
Thank you, Commissioner Woolley. So yes, the ultimate section does show for Felix Road, 135-foot right away with six total lanes of traffic. It is a phased approach per the traffic study. Currently, per the traffic study today, it does operate at a Level Service A, so you can't get any better than that. There is a concern with the overall speed that I've heard of folks driving Felix, and I think really with the traffic signal warrants that are required prior to issuance of CVO of Phase One, that's going to help mitigate the overall traffic speed of Felix Road. For the overall lane configuration, I believe that is also a phased approach.
I just wanted to address, that's the one thing I stood up for, but I just want you to understand why you're not seeing the expansion of the roadways as part of the preliminary plat that you just submitted. Polte previously has dedicated, the town already owns that right away for that expansion of that roadway. That is why it's not addressing the pre-plats, it's already a dedicated roadway that has not been approved. Plus Felix Road has the full dedication already recorded, even though it hasn't been fully built out. So Commissioner Woolley, that's why you're not seeing it on the pre-plat itself, is there's a roadway that's already been dedicated, it has not been approved, improved yet, but that roadway is already dedicated and owned by the Town of Florence at this point in time. So what Polte's proposing as we go in and develop into here, we'll be putting in the improvements on that dedicated right away that's already owned by the Town of Florence at this point in time.
Okay. Just, just for future knowledge, the public sees these packets, these are available for them to review before our meetings? That is one of the big questions that everybody was asking. Because they don't see it, it's not spoken of. Even if you just put a statement in there in the future.
Probably should have had a statement in our middle stating that those roadways were already dedicated and that we would be improving those roadways. But that's why you're not seeing it on the boundary lines in the pre-plat like you normally would see, because that roadway has already previously been dedicated to the town. Hasn't been improved yet, but we plan on improving it as we develop on this side of the roadway.
So just, just to answer the $900 question, when will Felix be built from the railroad down to Hunt Highway?
Polte currently owns the property that abuts the railroad itself, so we're not, we're working actively with the Town of Florence. The Town of Florence has now been with the ACC and is in the process of making those improvements known. It's a town-sponsored improvement, not a developer-sponsored improvement. And that goes along with the extension of Merrill Ranch Parkway. But the town and the town staff is currently working with the ACC to get approval of those crossings and what the improvements need to be at those crossings itself. So I want to stress, what Polte own and what Polte's responsible for does not continue all the way to Hunt Highway. We're designing it, our firm's designing it too, along with Colliers, the extension that goes all the way down to Highway, but that's held by other developers at this point in time itself. So Polte's responsibility is to expand it all the way to their property line on the south, which is, it's right where that pedestrian crossing is that we've got planned to go across Felix Road. So Polte will be putting in that full pedestrian crossing going across there as they improve Felix Road. So that crossing will be in right off, I won't say day one, but when Polte schedules is that road to be built and be expanded itself. But the pedestrian crossing will be built by Polte. The other property, the remainder property going south of Hunt Highway, obviously is owned by other developers at this point in time. We've got a corridor, it's already platted, the town already owns the land all the way down to Hunt Highway. I just don't have a schedule of when those improvements would actually be built from Polte's property boundary on the south to the remainder of Hunt Highway itself.
So when, when Polte starts doing the development on the east side of Felix on the abutting part of Felix Road that they own, will the improvements to Felix Road happen then or some future date?
I'm going to defer to Polte on that. Yeah, I can tackle that. So that will be phased, and we need, for circulation, we need to get down to Independence Way, so, which is nearly the, the property boundary there. So the plan would be that the widening of Felix Road on the east half adjacent to our property would be considered a Phase One improvement from, from our south property boundary up to the Phase One boundary, which is, continues north of Merrill Ranch Parkway, approximately half the distance to, to the railroad tracks there. I think, does it hit that other road coming out to Felix there? That's probably it.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, so like Todd alluded to, it is, it is a phased approach. There are a total of, you know, three phases directly adjacent to Felix Road. The thing is, is, you know, with the traffic signal going in with Phase One, I mean, the pavement, the curb needs to be placed at that time as well. The striping may vary, and there will be, through the construction process, there will be various tapers of, you know, incorporated along Felix as this phased roadway is ultimately built out from north to south, if that makes sense.
Since we know what the ultimate dimension is going to be, and we know that ultimately you will be building it, would it be nice to get the public on your side and just go ahead and build as much of that roadway as you can so you don't have any of these weird tapers and whatnot going on as you move north and south?
Yeah, I think that's something that we can discuss, and yeah.
That would be great. I think people would give you the thumbs up big time on that. Thank you.
I just, in reference to this road, it, we're really looking for help, is what we're doing. I, I know you guys, I know how it works, the whole phase thing. You heard one of our town residents say earlier tonight, Felix Road is becoming a major thoroughfare because of the county growth going up Felix beyond us and up Adaway. There's hundreds of thousands of homes going in there. So Felix is becoming a major corridor, even though you guys aren't building there yet. So we really want to be, the carrot to be in front of the horse this time, not the horse in front of the carrot. Because that road is just going to become more and more unsafe, especially when the Polte residents start moving in over there. So I just really want to see this good phase, phase process really bring in good public safety for us, because that is a huge concern, is the public safety. Okay, my last one is just a point of clarification. East of the railroad tracks, I'm going to use that as a point of reference, is part of the Eldorado Merrill Ranch product, project, correct?
That is correct.
And Polte is building over there, or they're part of it, or whoever, but it's not anything to do with Anthem at Merrill Ranch, correct?
That is correct. Really, I wanted to include those slides mainly to speak to the water and wastewater because of the water campus and the water reclamation facility. That's it.
Okay, so Anthem at Merrill Ranch is going to stop at the railroad tracks, period?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, goodie, I get to start. All right, let's see here. I'm, I'm the one that says Ghost Highway. I know it's the north-south corridor and now 505, but I'll keep calling it Ghost Highway because we keep trying to figure out where to put it, and it kind of drifts around. The, the big thing that, that I have an issue with and why we want to try and nail this down is I don't want you building a bunch of houses that we have to have ADOT tear down to put their highway through, okay? I want that to be on the record, because I don't want our, my citizens of Florence or the citizens of Arizona having to spend money to tear down good houses that you're going to build and then, you know, to kind of get the road in. We've been through that once. In fact, just a few weeks ago, a judge gave Owatuki more money because of what they did down there. So I know it's poor planning on ADOT's part, not on our, on yours or mine, but, you know, we need to kind of help them out. And we've had a couple of developers north of here help them out. And I know Eldorado's eager to have some off-ramps on the Ghost Highway. So that's why I bring it up quite often, and any developer. Let me ask about, we can look at this diagram that you have up here, the, the power lines. The power lines don't stay with the railroad all the way down. They actually angle down south into Florence Copper's area, right at their border. Is that going to be the second line where you have all that dotted line through there?
So the, the electrical, let me touch on the Ghost Highway real quick.
Go ahead.
So I, I just want to add that the southeast portion, where that black dashed line is that you referenced earlier, east of that, that whole court, that whole area there is actually what we call Phase Four. And so that is the last phase of development for this community. Knowing the longevity of this, we have some years, decade. So I just want to throw that out there. The power line corridors, I think it's actually heading down the open space just east.
The second one to the east.
Yeah, the second one to the east.
The shorter, where you have two bridges over there.
Correct.
Into Unit 91.
Yes, and so you have the power line corridor going through there, that's SRP and, and APS, and then it goes up to APS' substation along Copper Rail, like you alluded to, and then it heads further south of Hunt Highway. There have been discussions with APS of an additional line. APS has an easement already in place east of Copper Basin Rail, and so they would most likely utilize that easement that's in place today.
Okay. All right, that's, those are the two things that, you know, I agree, Phase Four is going to be a ways off, but we want to be also planning for it. Because I'll tell you what, ADOT's probably not going to come along as fast as you guys want to finish up, so.
We experienced that with SR 30 and Goodyear, so.
Okay. And we've heard some things about Sun City side versus Parkside. There's also a third party involved. We have a council that's kind of owned by both parties, both sides, that we will inherit when Polte leaves. And are they responsible for Merrill Ranch Parkway maintenance all the way across this property?
Yes, that, that same obligation would, or would be the same obligation that is, is west of Felix Road on Merrill Ranch Parkway.
And the same thing along Felix Road as you expand it, since we have to maintain that through the council and our dues to them.
It's just a point of clarification, the pavement and the concrete, the hardscape is all Florence, correct?
Correct.
The landscaping, the greenery is HOA. Just to clarify for everybody.
Yeah, that'll be ours responsibility up along Felix, and if whatever's south there all the way down to Hunt, they'll have to work out a deal too. So let me ask that question. Right now, our landscaper has a pretty good yard with all their equipment and a parking lot for their employees up there in the very north end, right before the railroad. But in your plans here, we don't see that anymore. Is a landscaper going to be allocated lands anywhere?
We'll take that up with the maintenance company at that time. We have project of the same size where they do not have a yard, that they work out of their own. But that will be something we'll have to determine as the community develops and how that landscape management group works and what their needs are.
Well, I, I think we need it. I would say that for sure, because they, they need a parking lot too. There's probably 40 cars parked up there at times, as well as all their equipments inside the walls and the fences, so quite a bit there.
And there are a variety of folks that park there that aren't necessarily landscape maintenance folks. There are a lot of the workers that, that are working on the site today.
Yeah, your watering truck guy parks there and stuff like that, I understand, for the, keeping the dust down as we build around the golf course there on the north end. Page two of your narrative discusses parks in relationship to the Town of Florence. Are there any parks in this plot that are going to be assigned to Florence?
No, they'll be part of the HOA system.
And I know twice in here, both in the narrative and on page 13, there's a table that shows what the approved lot sizes and driveway sizes and things like that are compared to our present standards. And I understand that those are vested interests that you guys have, and we really can't touch those. So I won't get into that too much either, even though we have a few trucks that stick out into the street from their parking at the front of their garage in the present time. When you widen Felix, will you do anything to the west side of Felix?
Yes, I believe Felix is not widened to its ultimate section as far as the curb placement goes to the, to the west.
It is.
It is? It'll be restriped? No additional pavement?
Currently, the west side of Felix is owned by the Town of Florence. It has been turned over, it's under the Town of Florence's maintenance process right now. When we widen Felix Road, obviously, we're going to have to restripe it instead of two lanes, one lane going east direction. Now we're going to have three lanes going east direction once we do our improvements. But as far as maintenance issue on Felix Road itself, it's owned by the Town of Florence at this point in time.
Okay, so that tells me that all the widening is going to happen to the east and not to the west at all. Is that correct?
Say that again, sorry.
All the widening of the road will happen to the east and not to the west at all?
If you look at Felix Road in its current condition right now, you'll see one side of the curb and gutter for the median has already been constructed down there. So basically, what was planned for the three southbound lanes was turned into just two lanes, north and south as it currently exists right now. But the improvements that are in place as of today is the far west curb and gutter, and then the interior curb and gutter for the median is what's in place, and that's what's been turned over to the Town of Florence at this point in time.
I know we didn't have in our packet, but one of the slides you put up, you showed the Felix Road with the six lanes to it. Can you go back to that? Is there a median in between there?
There's a median in it too, yes.
So you're going to have to add the median as well?
Right. Right here, yep.
Okay. We didn't have that in our packet.
So it would be very similar to what you have on Merrill Ranch Parkway. It's going to be a landscape, kind of like we have along Merrill Ranch Parkway. Even though Merrill Ranch Parkway is only four, two lanes east direction, Felix will be six lanes.
It's going to be like Hunt Highway, right?
Say it again.
Be like Hunt Highway in front of Safeway.
Correct, correct. Like Hunt Highway. Hunt Highway currently is, is six lanes.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand what, what the vision is, what the, the plan is. I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, other than I don't think you ought to go beyond four lanes, but that's my personal opinion. Let's see here. And you talked about the pedestrian underpass. I know we have two of them under Hunt Highway, one up where Meritage is, doesn't complete over to Starbucks yet, but we do have one behind the fire station that goes over to a playground at Dea Horton. Are, you're going to put that essentially at where Centennial is hitting Felix? Is that where the plan is? And that's where you've done half of it?
Are you, are you talking about the pedestrian crossing on Felix?
Talking about pedestrian underpass.
Yes, similar to what we have over on Hunt Highway.
And it's going to be essentially right there next to. And it's going to be essentially right there next to Centennial. Is that correct?
Uh, Independence Way is the major, it's a little bit north of it.
Independence?
Yeah, but if you go a little bit south is what we call Unit Nine, and you'll look, we have a, we have a full eighty-foot-plus corridor that will lead from that all the way over to the community park right there. And currently, what's been built there, we have the trail from Unit Nine going to the community park. So that would just be an extension underneath the pedestrian crossing that would then lead up into our community here that we're proposing on the, the east side in the community park up in that area.
Well, I see it more as where the children can go to school and return from school, not have to cross Felix at the, at Level and give them a little more safe passage across that road. That's why having it only on the south end makes sense.
That would be the primary corridor for the children to get back and forth to the K-3 school right now, correct?
In fact, it looks like you have those, um, concrete portions already sitting over there on the east side, so.
Unfortunately, I don't know how usable they are at this point in the game. We, we'll be probably not using those, but it will be similar, be very similar to what we have going across Hunt Highway over the D.R. Horton portion of the project.
All right, if I could, Mr. Lehman, I'd just butt in since we're talking about this. Um, I just walked there this morning, so it's quite fresh on my mind, and I walk there quite often. The trail that is coming east along the south edge of the, of the development right now that goes and drops down into that underpass is currently a DG material. Will you be making that like the rest of the paths, making that a nice white concrete path? Okay, here to head not there?
I believe that's the intention. So this main corridor would be a concrete path that goes all the way up into that. With, just, there is nowhere it was going at this point in time, so we didn't.
Right, no, that makes perfect sense.
If you notice right now, you'll see grates on the front of that portion of the box right there blocking off any kind of access.
Yes, a lot of graffiti in there. And then at the, at the west end of it is a little pocket park with a jungle gym type deal. And then the, at that point, the sidewalks go down to like three and four feet in, in width. They're really small. Um, will the wider width be taken all the way over to that nice, correct?
I believe, I believe the intention's an eight, ten-foot concrete path all the way along.
Perfect, because that gives the kids a straight shot down to the elementary school. That's awesome, which is part of this man's concern. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, um, looking at the native washes, which have the Ghost Highway and the electrical bypasses or rightaways in them, um, the bridges that are down there over to Unit Ninety-One, they're fairly close to each other. If we had a pretty good wash through there, there's, there's a danger of losing both of those. And I don't want to criticize our fire department, but I think a fire escape to the southeast of Hunt Highway would be appropriate there. Think about it, I'm just asking.
We'll think about, yes, um, Commissioner Lehman, we, we do size our box culverts to the hundred-year, two-hour event. Um, we have a master drainage study for this entire area. We're, we're very familiar with it. We
Okay.
fully recognize it. There's, there's multiple safety factors that are also built into sizing box culverts with excess capacity.
Okay. On page five of the narrative, you talk about the walls along Felix. And most of them that I see on the plans are pretty straight. We would really like to have something more than just a long corridor of a, of a wall. If we could angle those walls occasionally and give them a little bit more scope to them would be helpful. These are suggestions, but, uh, it might be, might be better than what, you know, just seeing a long wall for about half a mile.
No, understood. And, and they would follow the back property lines of those lots, similar as to the fashion on the west side, which is very curvilinear in nature.
Yes.
With a lot of open spaces, or they turn and, and where a knuckle opens or something of that nature. So they, they would follow the back property, uh, lots, lotting that you see there.
Okay.
Which is, undulates quite a bit.
Just like to get it more like the west side, so it doesn't look so plain all the time. Page six, uh, just wants to remind us that the town of Florence, um, provides the water and wastewater. And I appreciate the, the one drawing you threw today because there was a comment about the treatment plant. And I'm not aware of that one. I'm, and I've only been here five years, so I don't know the, all the history of the, the town of Florence and their wastewater treatment, but now I at least have an idea, and you guys are keeping up with it, so I appreciate that. Every time I come to these meetings, I always get something more than what's in my packet. I don't know why it is, but we appreciate you guys showing us everything you can and your ideas at this time. Let's see here. Already talked about the fire road. Let's go to, uh, CV four. CV four is the, your first phase. I don't know if you have that up there or not. Do you, you have, you're drawing CV four? It's actually page thirty-eight of our packet, which was only three hundred and ninety-seven pages long, but that's okay. And I do look at every page before I come here. Uh, you show Merrill Ranch Parkway going across there and building on both sides as Phase One. I, I assume that you're going to continue that as paved road all the way to the right away for the power line at this time. Is that correct?
The road, I don't want to, um, I, I believe the road would be paved up to where vehicles travel. The, the thing about AC pavement is it benefits when they have the vehicular loading on top of the AC, so it doesn't crack over time. You know, I, I think the roadway would be designed in a way for the entire Merrill Ranch Parkway, but, but as far as the, the paved surface itself, it would stop probably at that collector or, actually, I take that back. Commissioner Lehman, we would have to go all the way to the fire access, the temporary fire access, all the way to the east, yeah. So it would be paved all the way through.
You'd go all the way over to where APS has their substation? Okay. I just wanted to verify that. And also on here, you have these, um, in this AMR construction phasing, you have the need and you have the independent. And all you're referring to there is you need what neighborhood to give you access for fire before another one, or it's independent and it doesn't need a, a connection to some other section of the property? Is that correct?
Yeah, so the table.
I want to make sure I understand your, your nomenclature.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Um, the table is actually something we worked with Jennifer Peel-Davis on. It was something that we went back and forth, and we wanted to try and make it as clear as possible of what phases are, um, with the phase development, what parcels and units are required in order to provide second forms of access. And so the table speaks to the nature of what parcels act independent of one another and which ones are dependent on adjacent parcels or a parcels or units nearby.
Next thing is on that same drawing. You showed the APS substation over there at the end of a turnaround. Access right now that they come in on essentially would be the east side is two gates into the APS yard. Are you going to give them any kind of a gravelled road to get in there off of Merrill Ranch Parkway, expect them to come in off that turnaround?
No, we would want them to, um, enter off of Merrill Ranch Parkway. We would not want to promote or have them travel through the neighborhood and, and enter off that cul-de-sac. I think that's.
I appreciate that for our, my fellow residents there. But also, we just approved a monopole that's going on the, essentially the northwest side of that. And it doesn't show on that drawing, but I know your, your contractor or whoever for the I-six exhibit shows it. So it, hopefully, you're going to have to figure out what to do with that turnaround there a little bit, right?
Commissioner Lehman, we, that information was brought to our attention yesterday. We are incorporating that into our final plots and making subtle adjustments to that cul-de-sac and pulling it back to accommodate that cell tower.
Okay. We talked about that, we talked about that. If we build the Ghost Highway, you have two, two bridges that go across what looks like a wash there at the southeast corner where the, the high line goes as well. So it's going to be a little bit hard to, to know exactly where that's going to go and, and if you've allowed enough room to the houses over there. I don't want to stress that too much. I'm just going to put it on the record, okay? Also on your, um, DT-O-one drawing, at the page forty-one of our packet, it refers to Cherry Hill Road. Looks like you copied it from somewhere and you didn't catch that typo. I'm just letting you know.
That was my fault.
We will blame you. On to my second page. It is shorter. The key map on page one of fifteen, on page one ninety-six of ours, all of these keep referring to, um, to page one. They aren't numbered consistently. I, I don't know. They're, on sheet fourteen, it talks about waterfalls. That's the entrance in? You aren't going to put any waterfalls on this, are you? Like our entrance into Anthem over by Safeway? You're not planning anything like that? Just a monument that's on that corner?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to save some water here in Arizona, so that's good. Do you have any designated pet areas in here?
Not currently, um, according to this. We have the, the pet park already existing over where, in the larger community park area that, that addresses that.
Well, in our Sun City portion, we do have each neighborhood seems to have at least a close area of where we put up the dog, you know, cleanup station and things of that sort. So they have some grass to go on. They don't have to go all the way to the dog park. So you're not going to put any dog parks in the northern part at least?
Well, we show the, the green spaces, um, that would, would satisfy that, that question, I think, along with the, the dog bag sections and whatnot. So that should accommodate that if you had another.
Okay, when you show the playground equipment, I'm not sure have, is it labeled? What you've got underneath that playground? Are we going to have rubberized material, or is it going to be, what's going to be underneath there for children that might fall?
Hello, Chairman and Commissioners, Ryan Wilt, uh, landscape architect for this project. All of the playground structures, when and if they appear in these neighborhoods, will have a safety surface under them, whether it be faux turf with a pad for a fall zone or a wood fiber that is ADA accessible.
Okay, thank you. Will each of the neighborhoods have a monument with the name of their neighborhood?
Yes.
Just not in this packet, that's why I wondered. We'll go back a little bit to transportation and safety. Are you planning on putting the stoplights on at, am I going to say it right, Constitution and Merrill Ranch Parkway before there's occupancy in the neighborhood so that we can get crossings safely?
That is correct. In addition to Hunt Highway and Felix Road. And I think it's Independence Way.
Okay. I, I've said it wrong earlier. All your SNC eleven reports are page number one. That's something that probably needs to be corrected in the, an update to the package. The, um, I'm not going to get in too much about this, but I know your traffic study is great, except that you don't have any pedestrians or a couple of bicycles, I think, crossing these intersections in the future. Uh, right now, I know we only have coyotes and rabbits that cross at those intersections, but in the future, we will have a lot of children, and there will be a lot of golf carts driving from at least one side to, and even the south side over to the golf course. And they're going to need a good, you know, traffic light. So, um, I would appreciate that, uh, we get those traffic lights in early. I know that there was a statement that they've already put in the, uh, the boxes so that we can have the traffic lights installed, so that's good to know. And I'm going to, I want to stop there. I think I've done enough details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a number of questions. I don't even know where to begin. Uh, let's start with water reclamation. And before I forget, Mr. Wilt, before you leave, no, no, that's okay. Before you leave, I'd like to speak to you offline. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Um, water reclamation. So you're putting in a water facility along with Monarch or Eldorado, rather. What are your plans to use the reclaimed water? Do you have any plans to use the reclaimed water to irrigate any of the HOA-owned facilities?
Uh, Vice Chair DeRosa, there, so there, there reach, it'll be recharged into the aquifer um, via recharge basins or injection wells or something of that nature. Uh, reclaimed water is not planned for this portion of the community.
Why not?
I think I may be able to help answer that question. Yeah, uh, so what happens, we're using town of Florence water rights. And if we irrigate with the town reclaimed water, the town doesn't get any credits for those water rights as far as reclaimed for landscaping itself. It's more beneficial to the town down at Waste Water Treatment Plant to do injection wells. And with that, they get credits for the injection of the effluent down into the aquifer itself. So it's a more of a benefit for the town to get those reclaimed water credits from ADWR.
Let me take a stab at that, too. This basically saves the town in putting the dual system in, because when they put the water in the ground, it redeems the identity as reclaimed water.
I, I understand that.
Although when they pull it back out, it goes through the drinking water system, but it's still, by accounting, is reclaimed water, saving the town the necessity of maintaining and building a dual system.
I understand that, but their system that they're putting in on their property is not hooking up into our system. They're putting in their own facility for water. So as long as they're building from scratch, why not put in a reclaimed system for that new area?
Having been there and lived through that, it's very expensive because you're essentially putting a second water system in with pump stations.
I appreciate that. I was asking the developer why.
The water credits, let me stress, the way water credits work here in Arizona, there's no credits when you use that reclaimed water for landscaping.
There's no credits for reclaimed.
No credits at all.
Okay.
So by the town being able to use injection wells, they now get credit for that water that's being put back down in the aquifer towards their allocated potable water system itself.
Thank you.
Yes, it's an installation and maintenance issue for the town too, because then that's turned over to the town, so now they're doubling their costs on their water maintenance. I, I understand it's, it's a very hot-button item, hot topic for everybody in the community. We need to quit using water and landscaping, but the value of those water credits way outweigh.
Well, I see, I see the purple, the purple water, um, all over Sand Tan, so hence my question, why are we not doing it here?
Probably the purple that you're seeing are not necessarily, they're not necessarily, um, irrigating landscaping. What you're seeing up in Sand Tan are more like the purple lines are more like forest mains where they're pumping sewage between sewer treatment plants and other systems itself. So even though you're seeing that purple pipe, that's not necessarily what it's being used for as far as irrigation itself.
And, and part of that is a not-so-well-planned Johnson utility system that created reclaimed water but had no use for it. So they were essentially dumping it off to farmers that would take it.
Pretty special.
So, so that's, that's what we're currently using. So I just want you to know our open amenities, the big amenities like our community park, the golf course is using all that, we are using the, the effluent that's coming out of the current Johnson utility plants to do those major irrigation systems we have in our community.
So Post and Butte is using reclaimed water?
Say it again?
Butte is using reclaimed?
We do. For, for the community park is being used.
And the community park that's, exists currently?
Current community park is using the reclaimed water along with the golf course.
Thank you.
So that water's not being wasted at all right now. We, we had that as part of our agreement, but we started developing with Johnson Utilities to use that water primarily.
Great, thank you.
Could, could, could you check on that and report back to us? Because my understanding that they have opted not to use the reclaimed water. In fact, they've just drilled another well. I don't think they're using reclaimed water right now, because it's not signed for it.
No, we are. It, it, it's in conjunction with, with, uh, irrigation well water. So, you know, get back to your original point. Back in the day, reclaimed water was the new shiny object that everybody thought was, was doing good until the recent, you know, exposure that you've seen from Arizona Department of Water Resources that our groundwater, uh, quantities are being depleted. So now, there's a little bit of twist on that effluent. So now, there's a little bit of twist on that effluent as opposed to growing grass and putting it out on lawns and such. It's, it's been determined that it's more beneficial in the ground to actually replenish the groundwater supplies. So there's been a little bit of twist there, hence what was just discussed about the, the recharge facilities at the water reclamation plant is we're putting it back in the ground and essentially adding to the, the volume of groundwater that can later be extracted for potable water.
And there's a little twist there also called physical availability. And the more they pump for that golf course, the less physical availability is there. And that'll catch up with us and burn us sometime if we're not careful.
Yeah. So, we're, we're, we are working with Epcor to try to get as much effluent as they'll can provide for the community, for the community park and the golf course. It is not enough to grow and maintain that grass, so we're supplementing with the, the irrigation well.
So maybe you'll consider putting in artificial turf in some of those parks?
Quite possibly.
Just a thought.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, let's get back to some of the transportation stuff. And, um, you talked about having the underground tunnel, so to speak, that will go through. Golf course, the golf carts will also be able to use that?
Yeah, I'm not so sure about that. Is it wide enough? Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, why not was the?
I'll let you answer that.
Obviously, obviously, the golf carts are not the primary transport that we'd be using down there, but we did build them large enough and tall enough, similar, where we got to go across highway, that a golf cart, two golf carts can make their way through that at the same time.
And, and is there an access to get over to the golf course from there?
Yes, once they get through that, as they come, they can, they can come up through the developments itself and get over to the golf course itself. Yes.
Great, thank you. So you talk about your pedestrian plan and what you plan on doing as the development grows. What are your interim plans to make sure that there's safety on, on Felix Road? And at what point in time do you anticipate putting in a traffic signal at Hunt Highway and Felix?
So the traffic signal is warranted with the phase one construction.
Is that phase one construction starting or phase one construction completing?
Completing.
Completing. And that would be somewhere around 2035?
Yeah, absorb some rates. It's a guess, yes.
Can I ask why we're moving this forward now when we have so many years ahead? You're selling approximately a hundred to a hundred and ten homes a year of over two thousand homes in Sun City, and yet, this is coming forward to us now? Is, is there a reason why we're pushing this through?
Vice Chairman, our Vice Chair DeRosa, it's, it's a great question. I think it's something that, that we can take back and, and discuss as it relates to the timing of the signals as it deals with the phase one construction. The pedestrian underpass would go in, you know, with phase one construction, early on, day one, like we talked, talked to previously. Pedestrian safety is a, a huge key, so I think that's, that's definitely needed.
But you haven't answered my question as to why we're pushing this now rather than waiting when you still have two thousand homes selling a hundred houses a year?
So currently, we, we're down to approximately three hundred homes on the available, or three hundred lots left on the Parkside piece of the current community. And rather than trying to plan them in the Anthem, uh, active adult area, we, we need to move across the freeway.
My understanding is Parkside still has another over thousand homes to sell. And that was information I received yesterday from people in Parkside.
Yeah, we don't have that many lots left to sell in Parkside.
The lots that you're looking at doing across the street, you're looking at decreasing the property, the, uh, the property lot size. You're looking at going from six thousand square feet down to forty-six hundred square feet, and the town has no problem with that?
So again, we're being governed by the PUD, so I would defer to the developer. The PUD probably articulates lot sizes and things like that. I don't, I haven't heard we're amending the PUD document.
No.
So the PUD document is a binding document that already provides for this lot size?
Correct.
And the same thing goes? That's the town's answer.
The same thing goes with the lot width from sixty, sixty feet down to forty feet, which again is a decrease of twenty feet?
There's, there's a variety of lot sizes there, right? And we're trying to, to find a mix that, that in, with a variety of lot sizes that we can probably provide some more, you know, a variety of, of price points as well. So it's currently planned to, to, to add some different size, lot sizes than what we're providing today.
And create minimum yard lot, yard, rear yards from twenty-five feet down to fifteen feet. This speaks to, I think, Mr. Woolley or Mr. Lehman who said, maybe it was, there are way more homes in this area, and the reason that you have the extra space is because you're decreasing the lot size so much.
So, let me go. Okay. So, um, the PUD document approved in two thousand and five, amended in two thousand and eight, thank you, Mari. Outlines lot sizes. Those changes were made between two thousand and five and two thousand and eight. So in two thousand and eight, and I don't know if Commissioner Woolley was on the board, that is when those changes were made to reduce lot sizes in the development.
So that would have had to come before P and Z at the time and then, and then council at the time?
I would defer to Jared because I believe he's the one with the most history in the room.
So, so the only amendment to the actual lot sizes, there's no amendment to the actual square footage lot size. We had minimums in two thousand and five. The only amendment that was made was on the rear yard setback. So if you look at the minimum lot areas on the proposed PUD, we went to forty-six hundred square feet. And then we did change to rear setback from twenty, was never twenty-five, it was twenty originally, back down to fifteen available on the back.
So you're saying the staff report is incorrect?
No, I think staff reports follow the difference in what was originally on the PUD itself.
So we've lost ten feet in the rear yards. You're not putting another pool, so homeowners will not?
I don't have the staff report right in front of me at this point in time, but I know the only difference was, was originally, I believe, a twenty-foot P, back rear yard setback, and it was reduced to fifteen foot in the two thousand and eight.
You're still reducing it to fifteen foot. Whether it was twenty-five or twenty, you're still reducing it to fifteen.
Yes, I believe that's what was done in two thousand and eight.
And the town is okay with that?
So, I, I, I guess I don't understand the question because that is what the PUD is, and that was what was amended and approved in two thousand and eight.
So the town has agreed to that, is my question. The answer is yes.
In two thousand and eight. Yes.
Shame on us. Oh, let me see, I have a bunch of more questions. You already said you don't have any idea when phase one will begin. Total dwelling units you've changed. You have no, no additional amenities. What did you plan for sports courts? Any idea?
So we have not specifically identified sports courts, but the balance of the community park, which is not done today, is, will be explored and, and, and planned in accordance with the HOA teams, who I know are reaching out to residents and seeking community feedback for the balance of that build out. So, again, we don't know what those amenities are today. We have room for several amenities over there. So through the HOA and, and Pulte, we'll try, and, and the community try to find the most, best programming for the balance of that space.
So can you give us approximate timeline when Pulte might come forward and let the residents know what those additional amenities might be?
As soon as we get the feedback from the, the folks and, and they begin to be, be decided upon.
So you're waiting for the results of the survey?
And, and feedback and collective collaboration on it, yes. We, we have not identified those items right now.
Mr. Wilt, in your landscaping, you talk about modern massing. Can you tell me what modern massing means?
Yes. The entries into the roadways, the, the monuments are going to have a clean lines massing of plants that kind of welcome you and give the, give the parcel a nice bright, you know, entrance. So it's just a cleaner line instead of putting twos and threes of everything together.
Perfect. And would you give grave consideration to putting in boulders in lieu of plants? It takes up more space and doesn't use water, still gives a nicer effect in some areas, so we're appropriate, something to kind of look at?
I can consider that.
You could consider that. I'd appreciate it, and I still want to talk to you, so don't leave.
I think I'm, I don't think I should leave.
No, please, please don't. Gentlemen, I don't get warm fuzzy feelings about this right now. I think there are a lot of questions that have gone unanswered in my mind, unfortunately. As a commissioner, I'm looking to build community. I'm not looking to just put in rooftops. The residents of Florence deserve amenities. We should not be an afterthought. So, um, I, I wish we had more clear answers this evening rather than maybe, could be, hoping to be, we'll look at it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
I'll make a run at some now. Will the development on the east side of Felix be all Pulte? All the homes being built there will be Pulte?
As far as we know today, yes.
Okay, I just wondered, because on west side of Hunt Highway, it was spun off to a couple of different.
Yeah, we're, we're the sole owner of this property.
Okay, super. The sixteen acres that we're kind of bantering back and forth near the existing activity center slash soccer fields, that's who you're talking about, where, where future amenities will be built in response to the community's needs? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, and then hopefully that part of that won't be taken up by the concern to have a spot to have a landscaper have storage. We don't want to give away any of our property to a landscaper for amenities, okay?
Actually, if you look at the original land plan, they show a, a construction yard there as, as a proposed space, yeah.
Oh, interesting, okay. So we'll, we'll be looking for good things from, from, from that part of the world. As I know, I, I live out there, obviously, and there are times when you go to use the, the swim facilities and things like that, where you have to actually make a reservation because there's, the use is so high, principally around holidays and things like that, but that becomes a little bit burdensome, so hopefully you'll take a good hard look at that. You said you had four miles of trails. That's awesome. I really appreciate that. How will you surface the trails? In particular, you have one very nice trail that kind of goes along the east side of the property by the railroad tracks and whatnot, a nice, long trail. How, how do you intend on surfacing those, those various paths through there?
Can you clarify what does servicing?
Sur, surface.
Oh, surfacing. I'm, I'm sorry. I said, I thought you meant who's maintaining it. Most likely, the, under the easement, the electrical easement, it's going to be a dual surface where it uses, it, it feeds the utility drivers and also pedestrians, therefore it'll probably be decomposed, crushed, decomposed granite. Because we don't want the utility drivers to damage the, the road or pathway.
And so what you're basically insinuating as well, that all the other paths through the community will be some combination of that and concrete?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay.
Can I ask another question real quick?
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to ask another question that's not in here, but I assume that the four bridges you're going to be putting over the washes will look like the ones we have on Spirit Trails with the rails and ra, and the, the tower, short and tall towers? Are they going to look the same?
That, that theming hasn't been decided upon yet.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Just a real quick question I forgot to ask. Can we go back to the pretty picture that's got the whole development in it? It's a density question. Unit sixty-nine, can you explain why it's, looks different than the rest?
Yes, Commissioner Woolley, so that is, that's the one parcel that reflects forty-seven by one hundred type product, so it's the smallest product that there is out of the nine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The, um, the slide that you had up that showed the wastewater reclamation system, I also walked down in that area and noticed that I believe it was Town of Florence drilled a well down in that location. It's capped currently, but drilled a well about three or four months ago, which I was, thought was going to be part of the, of the town's system. But it looks almost exactly correspond to where you have the wastewater reclamation plant. Is, do you know anything about going on with that? Did I get confused?
Yeah. So, 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 Chair, it's not where the Waste Water Treatment Plant is. The Waste Water Treatment Plant is about another thousand feet south of that is where the Waste Water Treatment Plant is being built. It was a test well, basically is to check production rates so we can do master water lines over in that area. It's capped off at this time, it's not in production at all, but we had to drill a well to kind of quantify the type of wells that we'd be getting down in that area so we could do a quantity of wells that are going to be necessary, not only for the Pulte side of the world, but also for the Eldorado side of the development itself. But where that well is actually drilled, the Waste Water Treatment Plant is almost two fields further to the south, two agriculture fields further to the south, right up against, if you, if I look at the overhead itself, it's really.
It's down by the old gravel.
Yeah, where the well is drilled, if you can see my cursor, I don't know if you can see it on the screen or not. The well is drilled about in this area right here, over a thousand plus feet north of where the, uh.
Okay, very good.
Reclamation plant's actually going to be built.
Oh, so it's just north of the old gravel facility then?
The well that was built, that was.
The, the reclamation plant, yeah.
It includes the gravel produc, yeah, just barely north of the gravel production area.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Very good.
With regard to the water, that was one question I had. Why are we going with, why are we not, why is Epcor not supplying this, this new development instead, instead, you know, Town of Florence is, isn't the infrastructure already in for Merrill Ranch?
No, the infrastructure is not in the, of course, the infrastructure that's in right now does not flow over their sewer treatment plant, and they do not have this as part of their service area. Part of the original development agreement, there's a boundary line drawn between Epcor's service area and the Town of Florence's service area, and that's the Felix Road corridor itself is the actual boundary between the two utility service providers.
Does that have benefit to the Town of Florence then?
Opinion here? It's an opinion. Town services are much cleaner and much more responsive to the synergy more than private utility systems themselves. And you, if you've lived out there long enough, I know the headaches that multiple residents have had with Johnson Utilities. Now, Epcor's on board, it's a much more reputable provider, I believe, at that point in time, but the town wants its own service area, and that's where we designated where the break line would be between the two service areas was Felix Road.
Yeah, I've been out here eleven years, and I was disappointed that the Town of Florence didn't buy out Johnson's Utilities, but anyway, there we are. Thank you.
Okay, in, in your verbiage, there's an area called Protection of Natural Features, and I appreciate you setting apart, which you basically have to. The, the major wash is coming down through here, but if, if we follow the town's standards and we retain the, the one hundred-year, two-hour storm, we're essentially depriving those natural features of water, which will eventually, they're going to die because the water used to come down into them. What's your plan to keep those natural features that we're trying to preserve alive?
Chairman Frost, so the natural bodies of water still see flow further to the north that concentrate within. that concentrate within that wash corridor in both cases. In addition to that, we could work with the town on incorporating various retention basins directly adjacent to those washes and utilizing something of preverse post or reduced retention. Reduced retention that would allow basically the first flush to be retained. The rest would be overflow via weirs into the natural wash.
Awesome. I'm looking for something innovative just like that so that we can keep those natural corridors alive. Because we're going to cut off a lot of their water that would be on those, who would have been on those slopes that would be coming into them. I'd hate to lose that as an amenity for the community. Kind of turning back towards the landscaping portion of the plan. I don't see that there is a path currently depicted underneath the power lines. Well, one, I know you're going to have to put a road in there, an all-weather road to satisfy those utilities. Is that part of the path system that's just not designated on here?
Yeah. The power line easement will be having a trail. When it heads south, we will analyze that with the grades and, because there is also a wash that goes through there. So when we get into engineering, we'll analyze that a little bit.
Yeah, it'll be a great, great trail for looping walking and whatnot in there. Okay. And you heard the comment already about Park Number One being in the 55-plus side with tyke amenities. And just a general comment that I'll make about virtually all of the pocket parks. When I overlay and I had to kind of draw it in, the contours for the retention basins that are there, there's a lot of them that doesn't work because where you have the amenities are on a slope. So hopefully, we can marry the civil up with the landscape and make those work because as they are right now, they don't work. And I know that Mr. Baxter has heard this before, but I'm not a big fan of putting turf on slopes because one of the stipulations we put in here that's common for the staff to put in is that it'll be playable turf. Very hard to play on a four-to-one side slope, so please be creative. And if, I mean, if you're coming off a play facility and going down into turf, that's good. But every place else, let's keep our turf where it's playable, which typically means in my mind, it's got to be about at least 50 feet wide so you can get in there and do something, okay? Something else that I have experienced in the current development, and my wife and I get out and ride bikes a lot, and there's a couple of locations that I know about where the path is, there is also a storm drain leading into a retention basin. And unfortunately, the path ends right at the inlet to the storm drain. And unless you've done it before, you dive off that vertical curve, which is quite an eye-opener. So would you please, if you're going to do that, put them off-center so that somebody doesn't kill themselves?
Yes.
Thank you.
I forgot to say yes to the last turf question as well. Yes.
And then at your entrance on Merrill Ranch Parkway and Felix, I noticed that you have grass. Would you please make that artificial turf? That is not playable. No one's going to go out there with their kids and play there. I'm good if it's artificial turf, but regular sod grass?
Yes.
Hey, getting all the right head nods here. I'm on a roll. Let's see what else. Your traffic study. Appreciate all the detail that I see there. And I just want to make sure that I understand when you're looking at the Hunt Highway, Adaway Road, you talk about a channelized eastbound right turn lane. Could you just describe that for me and everyone that's listening so we understand what a channelized turn lane is, just to make sure?
Channelized refers to the stacking and the storage, the overall storage that's incorporated into that turning movement.
And I understand stacking, and I understand a designated turn lane, but this has that moniker "channelized", and I don't see that anywhere else in your reports. I want to ask about it.
Chairman, I'm not exactly sure why StanTech used that verbiage. I can get additional clarification, but from my experience, it's usually dealing with stacking and queuing requirements.
Yeah, and they give the queuing requirements and the length of the queue and everything else, but just they put that descriptor in there that I don't see anywhere else in the report, only at eastbound Hunt Highway at Adaway. That's the only place I see it. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood what that is. And staff, just a question for you. What they depict here in their traffic report, is that pretty much what we are planning to as we're looking at building, currently building Adaway and Hunt Highway?
Chairman Frost, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, we're, the town is currently in the process of putting together plans for the intersection of Adaway and Hunt Highway. Does what they depict here in their traffic analysis mirror that? I mean, do we have similar results for what is needed there?
I will work through Public Works to confirm that question.
Okay, yeah, if you could get back to us on that, that would be awesome.
Thank you. Chairman Frost, I do want to add that in reviewing the StanTech Traffic Impact Analysis, they did pull the Y2K traffic study as well that they completed for that intersection. And so I believe that documentation is in the appendix of that report.
Great. I just hope they conform to each other. And then Merrill Ranch Parkway, as I know that you're accounting for your development as you size Merrill Ranch Parkway and as you do the warrant studies for Merrill Ranch and Felix. But as is obvious, Merrill Ranch Parkway is going to go over the railroad tracks and connect with the future development. But I really don't see where that's accounted for here. And loading here and whatnot in the impacts, but that's going to be a huge impact to this area.
Chairman Frost, you're absolutely correct. That will be reflected in their traffic impact analysis because there's not a land plan that exists today. We can't incorporate it into this study. So what they will need to do is they will need to analyze that development and make sure that there's enough other points of connection to that Parkway system to where it doesn't impede or impact the capacity of this roadway segment.
Yeah, that's my concern, and I'm wondering if we should put a fudge factor in there and run the model. It says, based on the densities that we see over there, this will be the impacts. I'd hate to build a brand-new road and then all of a sudden, it's just, it's non-functional. Chair, you can speak to us. That's fine.
Sorry to speak to this, but I believe there's different planning that's going on over in that area. But I think the original, the traffic report that it was presented to you did include the original approved PUD planning that was in that area. Hence why Merrill Ranch Parkway is jumping from two lanes east direction to three lanes east direction at that point of the process. So I believe the original PUD that was approved for the Merrill Ranch, even though it's being worked on at this point in time, there's still a maximum density that's set up for the El Dorado piece. And they did incorporate that in the original traffic study for the warrants on Merrill Ranch Parkway. So we feel comfortable with the design. The six lanes is not necessary for the Pulte development. The six lanes is to help incorporate what would be coming across from El Dorado. And I want to also point out that El Dorado's plan and what was done originally in the original Mount Ranch PUD, there's multiple points of access. They have another collector, a major arterial road going down onto Hunt Highway further east of us. And then they have an additional minor arterial connecting up north of the railroad tracks itself. So it's not like we'll be funneling the entire Mount Ranch development down Mount Ranch Parkway itself.
It's just a nice center-of-the-world road that's probably going to a lot of use. I appreciate the clarification there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, please?
Yes, AJ, please.
Yes, the Town of Florence recently approved a traffic plan update, a study. So in that scope of work includes looking at the approved planned unit developments and kind of forecasting a build-out scenario here in the town. So in addition to these inputs that we're receiving, traffic studies per development, there is an effort to aggregate those studies and into review to make sure that the points that you're raising, the commission is raising, will be addressed. So that additional study will be taking place over the course of the next 15 to 18 months. The purchase order was just approved, and we're planning on having a kickoff meeting with that consultant in the next two weeks.
That's great. I appreciate the clarification and the additional information. There is another collector that comes into here that's not reflected, and that is on Felix, about a quarter of a mile north of Merrill Ranch Parkway that serves basically that whole area that wraps up around the golf course. But I don't notice, I didn't notice anything in your plans here about northbound or southbound Felix and turn lanes and the median and whatnot for it.
The collector road you're referring to is Sun City Boulevard, an extension of Sun City Boulevard that wraps up around the golf course. We plan, it's a major collector coming out onto that. And yes, as we design Felix Road, we'll be making the turn lanes and median breaks to get us onto Sun City Boulevard itself.
Okay, I thought that would be the answer, but I just didn't see it in the report, so I just wanted to make sure that it's really.
That road does not serve the east side of this development itself. That road serves the west side of the development. So that's being addressed and being planned and engineered for the west side of the development at this point in time. But we are, as we design Felix Road all the way to the railroad tracks, we are incorporating that road as part of that design.
Perfect. Okay, so the last, let me ask one last question. Ton of information, huge packet to read through, a lot of great information from staff and from developers and their team. So is what we're seeing here in compliance with the PUD that the town approved in 2008?
Yes, staff's review of the PUD was articulated by the developer in this presentation that the number of units is less than what was previously, you know, approved. Parks and open space, as you look at that document and you look at the plans for park spaces, larger park spaces, pocket parks, trails and those things, while some of the layout may have changed since that original document, they're still meeting the intent, you know, in terms of providing those hard-surface trails, DG trails, pocket parks, larger parks. Our review would determine that they are compliant with what that intention was in the PUD document that was approved in March of 2005 and amended in April of 2008.
Thank you. Mr. Lee.
Just a little bit of follow-up. You mentioned Sun City Boulevard that's on this diagram we have here at the very top, coming in from the west. There's also a line showed match line A that has not been constructed yet, but that will be an access into that area and into the, between the golf holes there. And then down there, near match line B is Stony Quail that exits onto Felix. I assume those will all have turn lanes as well?
Correct. As the roads come out onto Felix Road, there's going to be turn lanes coming out onto Felix Road itself at those intersections.
The only way, the only places that will have essentially lights for turns will be up at Sun City Boulevard, at Merrill Ranch Parkway, and at Constitution. Is that correct?
So where you see match line A, Commissioner Lee, it is actually warranted in the future. It's just not warranted with Phase 1?
Yeah, I understand. I'm just looking to the future too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one more question. Unit 69, you said, are going to be smaller homes, correct?
Yes.
They're going to be owner-occupied, or will those be rental units?
The concept here today is that that could be a lock-and-leave project, product, where they are not intended to be rented. They are full-time or permanent residences, but the idea is that there may be a possibility of that being a lock-and-leave. It's a smaller product, folks that stay here for shorter periods of time and don't live here year-round. That gives them an opportunity to have a smaller home that's more easier to maintain and such and for a shorter period of time, trying to find one that fits that market. We feel there's a market out there that would like that.
So for the record, there'll be no rental, you're not building rental units?
No.
Thank you.
And I appreciate what you're calling the Paseos. The development I live in has those, my home backs to one of those. That is nice. That's really nice. Commission members, anything else? Okay, we'll open this, we'll now pull it back and open a public hearing. So anyone that would like to speak to this is welcome to do so. You have a three-minute time limit, and please, when you come up, if you would please give us your name for the record. Please. And if you would, by please, just talk to the mic, otherwise the folks who are listening on can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Todd Johnson and the Merrill Ranch. I'm just encouraged that the commission seems to be concerned about the entirety of Anthem Merrill Ranch as it concerns to this because the vibe I'm getting over here is a complete and total disregard for the current residents of the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Any commissioners?
You too, Jeff.
I'm Tom Rankin from Florence. I never heard a density tonight as far as what the density in this area is going to be compared to what the distance, destiny, density in the existing portion is. I don't know what the difference is, how much of a difference there is. I'm wondering if the prices of these homes are going to be lower due to the fact that the smaller acreage are taken up for square footage. Are they going to be starter homes? They're going to be for first buyers? You know, I don't know. I don't know if the price of everything's going. Knowing Pulte, as I've dealt with them over the years, they're going to get every dime out of them they can. And I know that they want a good working development. They want a good working condition with the Town of Florence, and they're going to say what they're going to do, but they did not answer a lot of your questions tonight. I'm sorry. If it was me sitting in your position, I'd table this until you got your answers, not without a forward recommendation to the council. Because they're going to have as many questions as what you have, more than likely. So why send unfinished product to the council to make a decision on? I made a mistake when we built the roads out there at Anthem, your subdivision. I did get them to put in the six-lane road, and that was a handshake agreement with Pulte. But I know today you can't get away with that because these guys don't want to do that. Make them put that road in before the development is done. It only makes sense to get that roadway up there and staked. No matter what they say, if they want to develop that, they will put in the entities to go there. The other thing that I did not know until I came tonight, that'll be in the development agreement, I would assume, you kept referring to the Town of Florence water out there. There is no Town of Florence water at this time out there. I don't know if you're aware of that. I don't know if the citizens of Florence are aware of that. And who's going to be able to use that septic system? Will other entities besides those in the Pulte area be able to use it? Questions I don't.
10 seconds left.
Yeah, I know it. So anyway, that's all I got to say, but I think you have too many left unanswered questions as it was brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. While our next person is speaking, would you want to look up that density? That's a good question, if we have that information on comparison between the one side and the other in its entirety.
What is, Commissioner, Commissioner? What's approved in the PUD is an overall density of. What is, Commissioner, what's approved in the PUD is an overall density of 3.5 for the entire development itself. We're well below that. Has Josh explained to you over here, we're averaging, you know, think of, what is it, like 2.5 or something like that?
I think he said 3.37.
2.37 is what we're at. And we're working with staff as we develop right here, but you can imagine, 11,000 lots, lose a thousand of them. We're well below the approved densities for the entire development itself. So I hope that answered your question, but there's not individual densities assigned to each subdivision. It's an overall density for the entire project itself.
So 3.0, just to reiterate it, just in case people weren't able to hear, 3.5 was the approved PUD density for the overall development? What we're looking at on this side now, because of the loss of lots and other things, it's going to be something around 3.37?
Yes. We've lowered the density significantly by opening it up and doing the Paseos, which was not done on the west side itself and getting rid of the rear-to-rear attached housing itself. So density has dropped significantly over on this side of the world.
Thank you. Please.
Les Buckner again. So I sat and I listened. I don't believe many of the questions that were asked were answered. I also take to heart that we're talking about quite a few years before the remaining homes on the Sun City side are built out. I think we have something like at least 1,000 homes to go. And at the current rate of sales, I think we're talking a lot more than five years, probably eight to 10 years, even if things pick up. So I guess I don't understand what the rush is to move forward now when there are a lot of open questions. And if Polte's going to be able to come back with a plan on amenities and what they're planning for later this year, wouldn't it be more timely for this to come before the commission for final, for approval of the plat at the time when Polte has a more complete picture and is able to more fully explain how the needs of the community are going to be met? Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
I'm Johnny Mendoza, Anthem resident. My biggest concern is that just north of the railroad tracks, we have another development that's on Felix. I don't know if this is more of a question towards the town manager, but we need to incorporate work on Felix with Mesquite Trails, also Eldorado Holdings, and with Polte all at the same time to try to do something to get Felix ready for the amount of traffic that's going to be on it. My understanding is that what's coming from the county and the state is all going to stop at Arizona Farms and Felix, so that's going to make Felix a mess. Arizona Farms is going to be a mess. Been talking to the county up there and letting them know that they need to do something with Arizona Farms. These roads are horrible. We need to do something sooner with the roads. As a good gesture, I believe that Polte could build the roads first and then start building their project. I think you would get more of the people on your side to build. Thank you.
Anyone else like to talk to? Please.
Again, Todd Nap, and thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. You know, I'm sorry to hear the, some of the negative feelings that that's not what we're about. You know, Del Webb's been building communities of this size for over 50 years and this is a fantastic community. Anthem at Merrill Ranch is a beautiful community. The intent from Polte Homes is to continue that legacy that we started out here and was planned many years ago and the development agreements prepared accordingly for us to continue that philosophy over on the east side of Felix. And for those that are concerned about kind of rash decisions, as I mentioned earlier, we are seeking to get started to provide more single-family homes because there's a very near-term ending to those lots available in Parkside. And as it stands today, we only want to go east with the single-family homes. So we are embarking on providing some significant infrastructure on behalf of the Town of Florence in water and wastewater facilities that we have been crippled by, quite honestly, on the west side of Felix through the Johnson Utilities and Epcor challenges of a private water company. We would be much further along, honestly, on the west side of Felix if there was adequate water supplies. So given the need to provide more single-family homes, the demand is there, we have the property dedicated for it east of Felix, we are seeking to put a substantial amount of infrastructure in the Town of Florence in line of a wastewater treatment facility and a water production and storage facility that will satisfy this eastern side of the community that with your support and the town's support, we won't run into the same situations that we've had with private water companies in this community. So in order to bring a house on east of Felix, we have to build a wastewater treatment plant that will be expandable while we would build what's needed for our property, Eldorado would build what's needed for their property. We're providing that infrastructure for that, for the town, that brings in revenues via meter fees and et cetera. It will be new infrastructure on behalf of the town, some of the largest facilities that the town has ever seen, that we're willing to put up the money to front that, to expand appropriately in the Anthem Merrill Ranch community with the support of the Town of Florence and that we grow together. And we're seeking, we think it's going to be an excellent opportunity getting east of Felix, having a new utility provider and providing new homes for single-family residents over there. Now, with regards to the theming and such, you know, honestly, as of right now, it's the same as what we have today. Anthem Merrill Ranch was planned many years ago and the current concept is that it remains the same. Now, as we go through this and folks have mentioned, this is a longer tail of a build-out. We're hoping to bring in some new and possible more attractive or updated, I should say, facilities and accents and things. Honestly, we don't know what those look like today, but that opportunity exists. And as we continue to, as we grow and submit plans to the town for review, we'll have opportunities to look at those elements at that point. But for today, we're anxious to get going and bring the infrastructure to the town and the additional single-family homes east of Felix in the near term.
Thank you, Ms. Nap. While you're up there, could you answer a question?
Yes.
One of the gentlemen spoke to us earlier, said that he had heard there was a 1,000 lot inventory still to be built. You used a different number earlier and I'm trying to remember what that was, that you said that there was only this many lots still left on the Parkside?
That's correct. Approximately 300 on the all-ages section. And the gentleman was correct on the lots in the active adult community up around the golf course and such. There are a significant number of lots up there and honestly, I would, those subdivisions would largely be built if we had water from Epcor over the last three years that essentially has dried up before our eyes.
No pun intended.
Yeah. So we acknowledge that. We acknowledge that and we actually see that going east of Felix is a gateway to uninterrupted growth that we've experienced in the last several years via the utility providers. And we're seeking the town's support to do that and grow together responsibly and respectfully, that in a fashion that you would expect in Del Webb community.
Just a couple of questions on water and wastewater facilities since you opened up the topic.
Fair enough.
Will the wastewater facilities be built to municipal grade or to an industrial grade? Those are just terms of art in the industry.
Yeah, it's, those will be in accordance with the town's requirements.
Okay. I've seen some built, that developers want to bring in packaged plants that are industrial grade, that are good for about 15 years and then it's a use and throwaway and you got to start all over again. So I'm hoping that you're building something much, much more permanent.
Yeah, the current plan is a permanent facility. That's expandable.
And the water facility, hopefully you're thinking aesthetic there too, not the tall steel tanks that are community eyesores versus something that's set into ground that you don't even know it's there, basically.
Yeah, honestly, that's currently planned on the Eldorado piece. I'm not sure what the topography shows over there, but as you know, there's a lot of topo in this region that can support something like that.
That'd be great. And I appreciate your commitment earlier on Felix Road to basically not face small pieces of Felix Road, but to do all of, all that you possibly can so that our residents don't do the in-and-out weave stuff, the slalom course as we move through this. And one other footnote that we learned about, a couple of weeks ago, we had a joint meeting with the council, is that the town and the county are moving forward with developing Hunt Highway. And when that happens, that's going to push a lot of traffic over onto Felix and going north up to Arizona Farms, Ataway and whatnot. So anything that you can do to get ahead of that would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, no, fair enough. I've heard enough comments about Felix Roads tonight. So, you know, you have our commitment to, our obligation on Felix Road, which is the east half of, adjacent to our property, we will build the east half of Felix Road in its entirety in the first phases of the project.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Nap a question. When you put in the water, the water treatment facility, will that be part of the CFD that is passed?
Correct. That would fall under that, yes.
Okay, so then the homeowners will be paying for that eventually. You'll lay out the money, but through the CFD, you'll collect that money back?
We'll collect some of it back. And that is based on build-out time and tax property rates that are governed by other folks.
I understand. I just want the residents to understand that that money will be collected back through a CFD.
Correct. Yes, that's a good financial funding.
CFD, for those who don't understand, is Community Facilities District. It's on your tax bill and you pay for the infrastructure that the developer puts in.
But this will be part of, not on ours, it'll be on the new residents.
It'll be on the new residents.
Just to clarify that.
Yeah.
Honestly, the CFD is an excellent financial funding mechanism to build communities.
Absolutely.
You know, any other way, we may not be able to accommodate some of the grade level of infrastructure that you're talking about when the developer lays 100% of it out and never gets a cent back. So it's a great mechanism.
And I have no problem with the CFD. I just want people to understand that you keep saying Polte's going to pay for it, Polte's going to pay for it. At the end of the day, Polte's not paying for it. The homeowner pays for it as each home is sold. Part of the CFD goes to pay the bond that you'll have over the next 30 years.
That is true. I can tell you that the, some of the infrastructure costs for our piece will not be fully refunded through the CFD and those will be funds that Polte's providing with our return.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order at this time. This is a public hearing and we are not supposed to have open dialogue during public hearing?
Nope.
With the public. So we need to get back on track and get the public hearing going and allow the public the opportunity to say what they'd like to say.
Super. Good point of order.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to us this evening? Please, come forward. Oh, okay.
Hello, my name is Steve Engel and I represent the pickleball court. You all know about all that. We're growing fast. We have over 400 members. We'll be 500 by the end of the year. We have eight courts. We're really struggling. It's just part of the amenities. The Union Center alone is struggling to keep up with everybody. Before things expand even more, we really need some commitment for the amenities like pickleball and the other sports as well as the Union Center. Thank you.
And as alluded to earlier, keep making your thoughts known because that will be factored in as the amenities are built there with the surveys that are happening. So yeah, hang in there.
Thanks.
Please.
Again, my name's Ed Meyer. It occurs to me, and my experience is in Utah, so your legislature and your rules down here are far different. So I, you know, I vow to you folks to do whatever's appropriate. It does seem to me, though, I've heard a lot of discussion about density in an agreement that was entered to a number of years ago, and I would assume that that grants some legal rights to the developer because that happened earlier. But the developer is asking for a lot of concessions, specifically for that footprint for the school that was going to be for the old school. It seems to me that there is room for some negotiations to address some of the issues relative to density as well as to address what needs to happen with that property. And I would hold that property in abeyance until we can get better answers. Even if you need to develop that in Utah, be called public facilities land with conditional uses associated with them, and just, I don't think we're ready to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Courtney.
And Courtney, is your hand up online that you'd like to speak to us?
Yes, please. Thank you. So Polte, if you understand that our main priority is safety, you can't sit here and tell me that you don't understand the issues that we are having with our current unsafe roads being Felix, Hunt Highway, Ataway, Arizona Farms, 287 and 79. Your residents will not just stay within the four walls of your subdivision. You understand that, right? So we are, it seems like eons away from getting the roads that we need to accommodate the rest of your growth. I respectfully ask you guys to bow out for a while until we get these roads under control. So many of you guys, the home builders are just so greedy, you don't care. You understand these problems, but you just want to keep building. And I get it, it's part of business. We had three kids hit recently in Santan. Accidents constantly on Hunt Highway. Yes, Hunt Highway is getting ready to go under construction for two years, for two years. The traffic will get diverted through your road, through Felix. And am I understanding the construction, their improvements will stop at the railroad tracks? What about continuing north to Felix? Polte, are you telling me that your residents will not drive north across the tracks to Arizona Farms Road? You have no commitment on helping fix these roads. And am I understanding it's not Polte paying to fix these roads, it's going to be us taxpayers in the Town of Florence? Is that correct? And, you know, with the water, a couple, last year, the year before, Florence Council approved to give our water credits over to Epcor so they can keep building. This is just a cycle that keeps repeating itself. We are not ready for any more growth and Eldorado is knocking on our door. Dobson Farms is knocking, Langley, this whole area is due for an explosion of growth and we are not ready. We need to sustain what we have right now without greedy developers wanting to come in that don't care about these residents' current safety issues. It's insane. So please, put the brakes on this for a while. Let's get these roads fixed. This is very important. So who's paying for these roads and why isn't it going all the way north of the tracks to Arizona Farms? This is insane to not require this. And if we approve this, the roads need to be fixed first. First. We keep continuing the cycle, you guys, and then you keep blaming it on prior administrations. This goes back to '05 and '08. We know what's going on with that work session. We know what lies ahead of us right now. We have to get this planning under control. We have to get this planning under control.
Courtney, have you used your time up?
Sanity, and it is not safe.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate your comments. Now, see any other hands online, is anyone else here that would like to speak this evening? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up to the commission. Now, just to understand something that we, that we went over really quickly earlier, because of the way the PUD is set up, this will not go, the final plat will not go to council for approval.
The final plat will go to town council for approval, but the preliminary plat will not go to town council.
Okay, somehow I got wording mixed up earlier, I wanted to make sure I understood that. So the, the council will get the, the, the final approval, the final plat, just like the normal process?
Yes.
Okay, wanted to make sure.
And we will get it too? You will get the final plat?
We get the stab. We, we get the stab of the first, the preliminary plat and council gets the final plat, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we had three council members here this evening that heard the discussion, so hopefully you'll, if there's any concerns that weren't addressed this evening that are relevant, they'll understand what, what's there, and we have, I know we have a very astute council liaison who's served with us before on this commission who will make sure that happens as well, so we're, we're glad for that.
In our town council, in the RCA, we will provide town council the meeting minutes from this meeting, as well as a summary of the topics that were discussed.
Okay.
Chair, thank you, if I could just say, it's the mayor's directive.
Kathy, we can't hear you.
It's the mayor's directive that all the council liaisons bring back to council at the next meeting, our impressions of the meeting, and clearly, they won't be as detailed as the meeting minutes or the RCA when this comes for plat, but the council will hear what went on tonight in my abbreviated fashion to kind of prepare them for what's coming with that.
Excellent, thank you. Commission members, any questions or concerns that weren't answered this evening that we need to talk about?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I hear Polte's need for Parkside to expand, is there any way we could divide this project up? Because we, on Sun City's side, are not quite in that critical move forward, and I can appreciate that you want to move forward to provide homes for residents and to grow the community. Is there any way we can ask for that to, to come in two parts, and do the Parkside part now, and come later for the Sun City side? Is that a possibility?
I, I, just a, a thought, because we've got them to commit to Felix Road all the way through, which, and I'd, I'd much rather have them do that and get that road in to deal with all the safety and concerns.
But Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear the city attorneys, I'd like to hear the town attorney's opinion as to whether or not it could be split, because right now, my motion is going to be to table this for at least thirty days, if not forty-five days, until we get more answers. Mr. Rankin, Mayor Rankin was absolutely correct, we, there are so many unanswered questions tonight that I'd like to table this, unless, of course, we can split it if Mr. Mattis feels that that's appropriate.
I, I don't think you have, I mean, I, Madam Vice Chair and Chair, I mean, you can ask the applicant what they feel about that, but I can't tell you whether you should do that or not, their application is for the full preliminary plat that they've laid out, so that's what they've paid for, that's what they're applying for, so I find it hard to believe that they would agree to split it, but I don't want to speak for them, so I mean, that's a question you can ask them, as far as continuing, that's a separate issue, and you should probably discuss it only when you have a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
And I just ask if there were any questions or concerns that weren't answered, and...
Oh, absolutely, there were many questions that are not answered, most of my questions, I didn't feel, get any answered, not answered. How many homes on Sun City's side, we don't know, how many homes on Parkside's side, we don't know. I, I put my list of questions away, but quite frankly, I, there were just too many, well, we'll think about it, or, we think we can do that, and will you condition it with turf in the, in the beginning of the driveway going in, will you ask for that as a condition of approval? Right now, they're going to put turf in, unless we condition it, we haven't conditioned it. So, there, for me, there are just a lot of unanswered questions, questions about amenities, they're waiting for the survey to come through. We know the Strategic Planning Committee from the HOA has sent, is sending that survey out within the next couple of days. I'd like to wait, I'd like to see what that looks like, and see how that impacts the changes that they may make, or they may decide, we've been waiting to hear what will those changes look like, and we got no answers tonight. Got no answers at all, I got no answers tonight, obviously, you don't feel the same, which is fine, but that is my opinion, and that's where I'm coming from, so my motion would be to table this for at least thirty to forty-five days, unless they're willing to split the project, and that's their, that's their choice.
Okay, any, any other concerns that weren't answered this evening, and we have the one that, just to understand how many units are on one side or the other? And?
My, it's more, I, I just, I said it at the beginning when I started with my questions and concerns, I just feel like the whole thing is being rushed, and when we asked them tonight, they really couldn't answer why it's being rushed. We're not against it, I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions that we need before we can make sure that the council is ready to put their signature on it. So, I, I'll second her motion, I think we need to table it for more information, more research.
Okay, so clarify that motion, because you, you put out two dates.
I split out two dates, I'll go for forty-five days, I would like to table this for forty-five days, and bring it back in forty-five days, and hopefully there'll, there'll be more, more information at that time.
Mr. Chair, so, it looks like there's some procedures in the PUD, but then there are some town procedures in the town code, and by implication, it looks like the commission can continue their decision on the preliminary plat, but it looks like the language says no preliminary plat may be continued or tabled for more than two consecutive regular meetings.
Then that would be thirty days.
Yeah.
Then I will, then I will amend my motion to read thirty days, thank you. Mr. Woolley, would you second that?
Yes, I second that still.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Vice Chair for a continuation for thirty days, and a second by Commissioner Woolley. All in favor of this continuation, please say, or this motion, I'm sorry, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I think we had all five of us say that. Now, just a clarification, I'm sure the team out here wants to know exactly what the questions are, so...
I think they heard a lot of the questions, and I...
So, what, what I'm asking is, if you have anything that needs clarified, can you please get it in writing to the staff?
Absolutely.
So there's no ambiguity when they come back in?
Yes.
In a month, then we can all be like this, okay?
Yes, so if you can...
Is that good, Polte team?
If you could get staff your questions as soon as possible, then we can send it to the developer, and make sure that they can...
Yeah, so we, we, so one week from today, get, have, make sure all your questions are in writing into staff, okay? That, that work for you, commissioners? One week from today? Oh, go ahead, AJ.
As a suggestion, the best way to probably affect what was said at this meeting is to prepare draft minutes, to present it at your next meeting, get you to review and approve them, it becomes the record of this meeting, and then the developer has a two-week period of time based on your approved minutes, because everything that would happen outside of this meeting could be piling on, or a restatement of what was said. Everyone had fair an opportunity tonight to clarify and answer all questions. So, what I would ask is, as opposed to that, let's work with the town clerk's office to prepare minutes, draft minutes, those will be presented at your next meeting, which is March sixth, March sixth, act on those minutes, and then the, the, the developer, the petitioner, knows exactly what you asked for, as opposed to the exercise of whatever the other exercise could be. I think that would be probably the more prudent approach to this, draft minutes, get, allow the commission to review and approve, and then present them to the developer so that they're on level footing to answer all questions that were both asked by the commission, as well as the comments made by the public during the public hearing, if, if, if you would consider that suggestion.
That's, that's fine, I think what, with us, that would give the developer about two weeks to come back to us with answers, so, that, that work, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, they can, they could ask, I mean, they could ask for another fifteen days if that was a challenge for them, I mean, they had that opportunity also, if they can't get back to us in fifteen days. But I like, I like Mr. Monroe's comments, because it's part of the minutes now, it's part of the record, and this way, we're not adding, subtracting, we're not elaborating on things that maybe were not really said.
And also, I, in addition, and I mean, I don't mean to pile on, but it also allows us to make sure the public comments that were captured correctly, presented and, and approved by, by this commission at, at the next meeting, so it, I, I think it just, it's maybe the cleaner way.
Okay, I think we can do that, that'd be fine. So we're continuing till a second meeting in March, with meeting minutes, the first meeting, to have all the clarification done, so the developer will have a couple of weeks to, to respond to those and be ready for that second meeting.
Yes, so, for, for the sake of those watching or those in attendance, the second meeting in March is Thursday, March twentieth, six PM, here.
Thursday, March twentieth, six PM, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Let's go to the next agenda item then. Thank you, Polte team, we appreciate you being here for your presentation and whatnot, thanks all, all, everyone that turned up, both here and online, we appreciate your being here and voicing your thoughts. Okay, item six B, presentation slash information on the process flow charts and procedures in the Town of Florence Development Code, Chapter 150.
Mr. Chairman, well, again, this is the start of what we hope to be a series of discussions, training, opportunities with the commission, I know it's been a long night, let's, we'll, we'll try to get through this part quickly, but we're going to talk about a couple of things tonight, we're going to talk about process, procedures, there's some flow charts that we're going to discuss, that Maricela has in a PowerPoint, and so we're going to talk through those a little bit. I know, as we lead into this, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, that you've asked questions like, well, what are the appropriate questions? What does the process look like? So what we're hoping to do in this session initially is to talk through that a little bit, and before we get into the flow charts that are, are going to be presented in the PowerPoint, the flow charts have already changed, and why that is, is because at Tuesday night's town council meeting, they, the council passed an ordinance that outlines some additional review of the technical advisory committee, and so, as we go through these flow charts, a few of them are incorrect because the packet that you received and was distributed to the public could not have taken into account the final decision of the town council at Tuesday night's meeting. So, please keep that in mind as we make our way through the presentation and discussion of these procedures, processes, and the flow charts, and I will do my best to identify where the TAC would now fit into some of these other processes. So with that, Mari and I hope to tag team on this and, and work together to, to talk through the flow charts as it relates to some of the different business items that come before you, and/or maybe the town council, and we'll work, we'll talk through that as well.
Okay. So we'll start with the conditional use permit process, all of these flow charts are based on specifically what's laid out in the town code in the development ordinance in Chapter 150. So to begin, you have your application seminal, that's pretty standard across the board, you have your staff review. Conditional use permits require a neighborhood meeting, so a public notice needs to go out before neighborhood meetings, and we've seen that with a couple of the conditional use permits, such as the wireless tower and the storage facilities, and then after that neighborhood meeting, there'd be another public notice to inform the public about the hearings that are to happen at, Planning and Zoning Commission at minimum. So the next step after the neighborhood meeting, you would go to Planning and Zoning Commission, there'd be a public hearing there, and public, the Planning and Zoning Commission would then forward a recommendation to town council.
Okay, so, let's talk about that step of the process, so, as Mari mentioned, this is all outlined in Chapter 150. Specifically, we're talking about conditional use permits, those are identified in Chapter 150 subsections 016, and so, I know a question has come up on, by the, by the commissioners, okay, so what questions are we supposed to ask, or can we ask, and so forth? So, I, I draw your attention to that section of, of, of the code, because those, it is outlined in the town code currently, what you should be considering when reviewing this petition for a conditional use. So again, that is, and again, not to, you know, belabor this, but it is subs, Chapter 150 subsections 016, and if you go to the paragraph H, G and H, it talks about your review, what you're supposed to look at, and, and, and then H gets into conditions and the things you should be considering. So as we go forward, as we develop staff reports in advance of the, of this, of this public hearing, we would outline those in the staff report, to remind, to remind the commissioners every meeting, this is a conditional use permit, again, this is how, this is us building our staff report up to better serve the commission, and we would articulate and point out this subsection, what, what you're going to be looking at, and the kinds of questions, or the guidance you're getting out of the town code.
Question?
Go ahead.
You, you show a straight line from the Planning and Zoning and the planning of public hearing to the council.
Yep.
That, that could be a approval, approval with conditions, denial, correct?
The, the step at the Planning and Zoning Commission would be a rec, a recommendation of...
Yes, it could be a recommendation to approve, approve with conditions, or to deny it. Yes, a recommendation.
So I think you really should have three different lines there with each of those labeled on there. Those are different options that we have, in essence, no matter what we do, it still goes to the town council.
Well, then, the point of the flow chart is to kind of have more or less a summary for those who are applying, or also for the public, so they just get a general idea of what's happening.
I understand.
So what we're taking is a very complex and, complexly constructed Chapter 150 and trying to give a flow chart. In our staff reports, that's where it needs to get more, more specific in terms of what the actions can be of the council, but again, if we, if, too much detail on a flow chart ends up becoming not a flow chart, I mean, I'll just, here, read it, I mean, so, again, this is a tool to explain the general process, as we write our staff reports, there needs to be a lot more detail in those, and we're working on that every day with your recommendations, but yeah, it, it's tough to, to get too far in, in the flow chart, and it's only one page, so we're trying to keep these things as simple and convey a, a lot of information in this chapter as, as quickly and directly as possible.
I know, but I'm used to flow charts with a diamond that says yes, no, and, and they can go different directions, but in essence, what I'm trying to say here is that no matter what we do, it still goes to the town council.
Right.
It's a recommendation.
As a recommendation, okay.
Okay, so just to finish it off, with town council action, you'll get the denial or approval, it is up to the mayor to decide whether to have a public hearing or not, it's not required, it is optional per code, but usually, most mayors open it up just so people get their last chance to say something. So the next one is a little bit more complicated, it is the design review process, you've seen several design reviews come through, it starts with the pre-application conference, and from there, the applicant will get a general sense of what the town wants, what codes we're following, and then they'll submit. After that formal seminal, staff will review, and once we get all the comments to the review, we'll move to the Technical Advisory Committee, or the TAC review, and that we will have with the applicant to go over the comments that we have during the staff review, and so it'll give us a chance... And so, it'll give us a chance to have a discussion and dialogue with the applicant instead of just handing them our comments and saying, yeah, send us a second submittal when you have the time. After that TAC review, it'll move either in one of two directions. If our codes state that, states that it's an administrative review and a staff decision, then it'll go in that direction. If our code states that it's for planning and zoning, then it'll follow in that one. Go ahead, A.J., if you want to.
Commissioner Woolley, you had a comment?
Yeah, just for clarification, could you demonstrate really quick what the difference is if it goes to P and Z versus goes to administrative review?
The administrative review currently in town code requires or allows for an administrative review of a development that is on an acre less of property or less than 10,000 square feet.
Also, if it's a single-family home, duplex or triplex, that's also administrative review.
Okay, thank you.
So, from there, it goes into either the staff approves it, then it can move straight into building permit. If it's going through Planning and Zoning Commission, then if Planning and Zoning takes action to approve, once they approve it, then it moves on to a building permit application.
And, and to clarify, because again, now we're going to start clarifying. Single-family, two-family, triplexes are administrative reviews. However, the, the process above that is also different. TAC's review, in, the TAC is not going to review the site plan for a single-family house in Park Site in Unit 92B. It's not going to happen. That is directly administrative review. The trigger for the Technical Advisory Committee is a housing that includes more than four units. So, again, there's, there's going to be a lot of branches that we can take here. So, this is, you know, thinking more of a commercial, more than four fam-, more than four residential units all the way through the highest and most intense industrial development that we may see come into the town.
The next process is the, yeah, I was going to say, we'll go to a pre-plat first.
So, this is, in a, so, this is also something that changed during this past Tuesday's Town Council meeting. This process no longer, preliminary plat process no longer is, includes council action. This process then is now changed where it is the Planning and Zoning Commission that will have final approval of the pre-plat. So, if we eliminate the section that says request for council action, we would, that block, that box is no longer involved in this process.
So, do we have denial and approval, is that what you're saying?
You have approved, deny, or table to get additional questions answered as took place this evening.
Okay.
So, going back to the final plat process, straightforward, they apply, staff reviews it. The code does not specify that has to go back to TAC again. It goes straight to Town Council. And then Town Council either approves or denies that final plat. That process has not changed.
So, so why wouldn't this just be a continuation of the preliminary plat process versus a standalone process? Because I see where in the, and here you have final plant application. Isn't that the same thing that I see over on the next page for final plat?
Oh, you mean this previous page, or...?
For preliminary plat process. Final plat application, isn't that the application on the final plat process?
So, at, under, under this flow chart, Mari, if you could just scroll up to approval, yeah. So, if the, if we eliminate the request for council action box, the final action is here at the commission. If you were to approve, this flow chart is just indicating simply that the next step in the process is a final plat application. We, the, the applicant needs this commission's approval of preliminary plat before they're allowed to move forward with a final plat application. So, it's just, in this case, it's just showing what the next step is.
Or are we not understanding the question?
I, I think what he's getting at, I, I think I'm understanding, is it really, we're looking at the preliminary. We're coming up with the more suggestions that the staff's already come up with. We, we approved that preliminary. The thought process is between preliminary and final. They've made corrections, they've done some of the changes that we've recommended, some of that before the final approval actually happens.
So, when we get to this step in the process, once that application is submitted, it's staff and their responsibility to review the minutes, the action of the commission to make sure that whatever stipulations you may included or conditions in your motion to approve were included so that, that we prepare and compile a, a complete package for the RCA that would be submitted to the Town Council for action on the final plat.
And I guess my thought is, you can't have a final plat without a preliminary plat, right?
That's correct.
So, this is a, this basically comes right off of this process, it's like, it's like the, the plating process in the town, there's a preliminary process and a final process. But it, it, when it says final plat application at the end of preliminary plat process, that's application submittal on the final plat process, right?
So, you're just saying it might just be good to remove that box that says final plat application after approval?
Just make one longer flow chart, because the, the reason why there are separate flow charts is because they're separate applications.
So, we, we may, yeah, that's why. There might be a continuity of all of it, but the, the reason why is because there is a specific application for each of these processes that we're talking about. And again, a, a developer knows we're doing this and this. So, usually in a pre-application meeting, way back at the beginning of the process, when we, that is what we cover at the pre-application is, this whole process, this whole, whole review period. And in a lot of cases, the developer's asking probably for both. You know, because they want to know how that is going to work. How does this, how long is it going to take to get through this step of the process, what about this step? So, we usually cover both.
And I'm just looking at the two previous ones that we did, these were all, that's the entire process right there. This is contingent, the final plat process is contingent on the preliminary plat process happening. So, it's not, it's not like it's, yeah, I'm, I'm fine, it's just...
So, what is the difference?
I think, I think we're two ships passing in the night right now.
So, what is, what is the difference in the application itself? Or is there a difference between the preliminary plat application and the final plat application? You said there are two different, there are two different applications, how do they differ?
Yep.
Usually, and how in-depth those?
How do they differ, period? I don't know what the, I don't know what the preliminary looks like, so I don't know what the final looks like. And I don't know what question to ask them. So, what is the difference between the preliminary and the final? You said there are two separate applications. If they differ, how do they differ?
Or maybe, maybe the easy way to put here on, where it says final plat application, make the box bigger and then parentheses say, see final plat process.
For the sake of Commissioner training this evening, Chapter 150 gets into the subdivision review process. So, I would draw your attention to Chapter 150, starting with subsection 200 that talks about purpose. And, and, and there are a countless number of pages that talk through what is reviewed during preliminary plat. The review of preliminary plat is articulated in Chapter 150 subsection 218. And it talks through what we will be looking at. It talks about your approval process, it talks about the significance of your approval, and it talks about how then to proceed with the next step. So, again, we're taking a very complex Chapter 150 and trying to break it down into a flow chart. For the sake of this, it does become this commission's requirement to be very familiar with 150. It's our job to review 150 so that when we put a staff report together and provide a recommendation to you for action or, 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 your, your, or, action step, we go through all these things. The significant difference in final plat, Commissioner, Vice Chair, is that there's a lot more information that is required for final plat. There's required sign-offs from the town engineer. Ultimately, there's the beginning of conversations with, with, with the town attorney about security, whether that's a letter of credit or anything like that. So, there's, there's a lot that goes into that. But I think that for the sake of this conversation, the preliminary plat is, is inferred in the name, preliminary. There are things we're going to review, we're going to look at broad things. We're going to figure out, is the, the water for this area provided by the Town of Florence or Epcor? It, it's, 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 it's the map, it's the picture. It will be final plat when we get cross-sections of roads, and all the detailed engineering, the detailed landscape plans, all of that is really reflected in the final plat and the supporting documents of that application.
So, just, just to, for instance, this evening, we'll use the example of, of the preliminary plat that we saw this evening. How many iterations did that go through with staff before we saw it?
There were two submittals. Of course, that, that doesn't include the pre-application meeting, so that would have been three.
You know what, and I, and, and I hope I'm not getting off the agenda here, and the attorney can turn me back if we are. It's, it's really neat that we get to see the, the TAC recommendations and how they've been incorporated. We never get to see what staff has already beat them up on and say, you know, we don't like this, go back with your next iteration and change this. Because it, I think that would be really helpful to know that, hey, we already talked to them about this, the shape of this retention basis, for lack of a better. And, and we're seeing it again, then we can be much more hard-nosed on them and say, look, staff already asked you, we're not going to do anything until you respond to staff.
And Chairman, how I would first respond to that is, then that would likely be in our recommendations or stipulations. If we've come to an impasse with the developer, we're likely going to call that out. And we're going to say, hey, there's a disagreement, and we recommend this, they want to do this. So, we, if, if it, if it gets to that level, it will be noted in the staff report. Luckily, we haven't had that yet, in my experience during the Town of Florence. But I, I, they, they say never say never. So, I, I do think that there, there may be a time in the future where that is the case. But so far, I think it's been a pretty good back and forth conversation. And we've taken a lot of cues from you as, as a commission over time in terms of looking at, and, and I know Chairman, you look a lot at, you know, sightlines into some of these areas. So, TAC covers that, staff covers that, and we, developer, if that comes up and those modifications are made.
I think a way, just to help you out here, A.J., to summarize preliminary versus final. Preliminary is a concept. This is what they would like to do. Our job at preliminary plat is to make sure, is the lay of the land correct? Does it meet our code, does it meet this, does it meet that? Final plat, all those questions about what's the playground going to look like? What's the ground underneath the playground going to look like? All of those things should be answered in the final plat. So, really, when they showed us tonight, they're really just showing us a concept of what they want. And, and that's our job to say, you know what, yeah, it's got good open space, it's got good this. It's not going to necessarily be a purple slide, it might be a yellow slide, but we won't know that till final plat. So, I think that's the way to understand preliminary plat is, it's a concept of what they would like to do, so.
However, doesn't, doesn't giving them the right for a preliminary plat put the wheels in motion for them to start doing engineering work, which then they start incurring real costs?
Oh, that, that is exactly correct. I mean, the, 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 the pre-plat approval is exactly that. It is the town's direction, this commission's direction, to say, we agree with your preliminary plat, we, or map, or, and, yes, you, we, that is your ability to move ahead into those more detailed engineering documents that then would be associated with a, a final plat submittal.
Which means more cost to the developer. So, when it comes back and if it goes to council for final plat, they're looking saying, well, how did this happen? Or how did that happen? So, the questions we've asked, I think, are questions that keeps the developer from spending that kind of money until I think we have better information to pass along to council. Comment, not question.
I'll, I'll ask a question then, or, or maybe, maybe I'll give an example. I'm trying to understand exactly. We, we reviewed, here's a good solid example, we reviewed the RV storage south of the prison. And coming out of that discussion, we left it with you, the staff, to have a meeting with the prison and decide where they wanted to put that north wall, okay? So, whatever that decision came out, we agreed, and that would be in the application that goes to council to vote for. Is that correct?
That would have, Mari, that was, was that at the conditional use stage of the process?
That's the conditional use stage.
Okay, so that was conditional use, and that, and that, 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 that part of the conversation was relayed? I believe the conditional use was approved?
It was. And it was a condition that staff, when it hits the next phase, that staff gets back information when the discussion with the prison happens.
And Mari, what would that next phase be?
Design review.
Right, so...
And it has not come for design review.
So, that meeting has not occurred yet?
No.
Okay.
They have not come back.
Yes, okay.
And, and, and to Commissioner, to your point, as we go through these training, the best way to talk about this is going to be like our real-life examples. These are the things we know best. So, I think as we work through these things, real-life examples and real things we've dealt with here, that's the best way for us to train up one another and, and, and figure out how to be better Commissioners, better staff, and, and just be better for the town.
So, A.J., Commissioner, Chairman Frost, excuse me, Chairman Frost tonight asked about, would, would Polte be willing to put artificial turf in the entryway? Should, should that, when it comes back, should that be a condition of approval? Should he have asked, should he ask that to be a condition?
Unless, when we see it again, they've changed their plans to show that it's artificial turf, then it's sort of memorialized, right?
Yeah, yeah, so, willing is a statement of will you. Directing someone is a statement of direction, right?
So is that, could he, could he make it a condition of approval? Could he make it one of the conditions? And should he make it one of the conditions?
I think in that case, you know, that's a tough one, that's a tough one to ask. Because, because again, and, and I, I think I was mentioning to, to Attorney Matisse here earlier, you know, we're, we're talking about Anthem, Merrill Ranch West, and we're talking about what's next east. And I'm, I think I'm pretty familiar with the other side of the road right now. And there is turf at the entrances. At the far end, there's two waterfalls. At the entrance to Sun City, there are waterfalls and turf. That has an aesthetic of, wow, this is pretty plush. There's palm trees right there at Sun City Boulevard and Merrill Ranch Parkway at the intersection. It is, it's showing off. And then we go down the road and, and, you know, we're, we're, we got different ideas of what the aesthetic is going to be moving out. So, it's something to keep in mind. You know, we're holding folks to standards, but we're telling them to, like, settle down in other arenas. So, consistency, I think, is something to consider. Artificial turf, it's expensive.
Should he make it a condition of approval? Should it be, should it be a condition? And, and we can use that as, just as an example. As you said, they've changed the landscape along the way. And, and I don't want to, I don't want this to be just about Polte, but that was just the example that happened tonight. If, if a commissioner asks for something during the course of a presentation, and the developer says, I think we can do that, should the commission ask for it to be a part of the condition of approval?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Chair, Vice Chair, I, there's probably no, I think the reason it sounds like we're struggling with answering that is probably there's no clear answer to that. I would say, conceptually, conditions are more typically, there's something that maybe the developer agrees to on the fly, so you add it to your motion, and then that becomes a condition and a requirement. If it's more kind of design element aspects, depending on the context, you're either, you know, you might work that in as you do for a lot of things. You suggest, or I note you're doing this on a preliminary plat. So, then you're hoping that it goes into... So then you're hoping that it goes into the final plat. The other way to handle that is, as the staff is more familiar with the things that you prefer and the council prefers, they might be able to require some of that in the initial reviews when they come into the department or at the TAC phase and say, you know, typically our commission, our council, this is one of their hot-button issues, one, two, and three. How do you feel about addressing that? And then maybe it starts getting addressed that way. But in answer to your question, uh, I would say, if it's not up and, and you've had that discussion, and the developer is standing up here and saying, yes, we're willing to do that, make it one of your conditions for your approval.
And, and I think I'm going to then, have to then, with the benefit of two minutes, I would, thank you, sir. I would draw your attention to Chapter 150, Subsection 142, landscaped areas. And it says, A, all landscaped areas shall be finished with a natural topping material, which may include, but not limited to, the following: turf, ground cover, planting, decomposed granite, river-run rock, expanded shale or bark. Artificial turf is not a natural covering. So if they came in with an artificial covering in an area, I would have to point out to you that that is in violation of Chapter 150, Subsection 142.
Unless coun, unless council changed it.
But your question specifically was, can the chairman ask them to do something?
Yes.
And I would have to come back and say, with the benefit of two minutes, to say, Chairman, that is in conflict with our current ordinance.
So that, so because the way the code is written, Code 150 is written, you can't even ask for that because council has not codified it?
I, I'm beholding to the rules that are in this book.
Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Please.
Uh, I feel like I'm in between the preliminary plat and the final plat. I have often heard many of you raise things at preliminary plat, and the developer has come back and said, well, we're not prepared to discuss that tonight because that's not until final plat. I have a concern now on this same subject. Tonight, it was raised a couple of times, and I've heard Commissioner Lehman, I think it was on monuments, or something to do with the RV, uh, conditional use permit. If that's not being captured as a formal request here at preliminary plat, and it comes to council, we don't know those discussions. So I think it's very important that it get formalized. When you bring it up on preliminary plat, if you think it's important, but again, it, we're not being clear to the developers because they're not expecting to walk in. A lot of the questions around landscaping, a lot of them are about blind spots where the police can't see. And my understanding is they're not prepared to discuss that till final plat. Well, if it doesn't get captured at preliminary plat, council is not going to know to ask that level of detail that you are asking. So I'm, I'm asking how we're going to make sure nothing falls through the cracks.
And Vice Mayor, by the time it gets to you, the developer's already invested significant amount of money. So how do we ask them to make changes at that point? That's a, a concern of mine, is that the developer has been given approval, and there are so many, again, unanswered questions, and yet it goes to council, and if you catch something, how do we get to change it when they've, have made such a large investment?
I'll tell you, a lot of this is preference. I, I, with all due respect, a lot of these conversations are preference conversations. The code is the code is the code.
I, I understand that, but is that not an opportunity for council to look at the co, we, we can't change the code.
We...
You can't change the code, but council can change the code.
We collectively, right, we're a team. And if, if we, as commission members, if we see gaps in process, we should be talking about maybe a, a, the committee as a whole, setting aside work groups, having conversations like this. If we believe there's gaps in this, in Chapter 150, we should be reviewing, considering, making recommendations. Just as I demonstrated earlier, a couple of the first things that we did was sort out TAC to make sure the TAC had review of everything. You know, we, we've talked about public hearing notice. We do work collectively and collaboratively to figure some of this stuff out. On the flip side, though, back to the artificial turf thing, what if everybody came in and everything was artificial turf? Right? So again, these are preferences as opposed to. So again, uh, some of this is, we're, we're applying a very complex thing to something called building the world, and, and it's tough. But again, if we find gaps in Chapter 150, we should be identifying them as commissioners, as staff, working together to make recommendations. As you all know, the town council has so many things to do in addition to reviewing development projects in our community. This commission has been given the direct responsibility to look at these items specifically. So again, if we begin to catch things, we're the body who has the ability to make recommendations for town council consideration.
So Vice Chair, because you've been on this topic, and, and so have several others here, to me, we have not had our strategy session yet, so I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody except myself, but I would expect one thing to come out, which would be a soft directive, which would say, in every instance possible, we are looking to save water. Right? And then I would flip it over, assuming that was passed by the council, to you all to look at the code and see, where are all the instances where we could say we prefer the water-saving alternative? However you would codify that. So that it's a broader directive, right, with our intention? And it would help you possibly deliberate and then pick out the codes? Because, uh, A.J.'s right, we don't want to restrict ourselves into a corner where it's either cost prohibitive or it's just too confining, but we could give that overarching. And I think that's one of the things that's missing. And I'm still not sure, I, I'm just not comfortable, because I know the level of detail you all get to here, and I'm not sure that it's going to get captured between preliminary plat and final plat. So I, I'll have to pay more attention and give you some specifics, but I know you all have asked important questions that I don't think is going to make it to final plat, that we would catch.
And, and based on the conversation, I think we need to be, on the dais, we need to be extremely cognizant of conditions. Because we always include in our, um, motion the conditions that staff has put in as part of the process. But like, tonight, if, if, if this would have gone through, I would have made sure it was conditioned that they committed to building Felix Road without phasing, you know? So, and, and that's just something that we need to remember when we do those, to note them, so that when we make those motions, that we, we capture all that.
And again, we are here tonight to talk about process procedures and the flow charts. There's a few more we need to go through. But again, back to the rulebook, we do have a section on residential landscape design standards. This is in Subsec, Chapter 150, Subsection 146. And the town specifically states that we would like to see low-use water landscapes. The next page gives the restriction. Grass turf use shall be restricted to 30% of the gross area of a single-family and two fa, two-family lot. So right now, our ordinance is 30% of the gross area. Now, if we want to change that, then we need to look at the 30% number. And so, again, everything that comes here, the developer knows this code not quite as well as we do, but they read these things. And so, again, if we believe that we want to take that from 30% to 15%, we got to start by codifying the code. Because the developer could come back and say, whoa, your code says that I'm allowed to do 30% turf. And we don't have a leg to stand on because that's the code. And we don't want to get into that with the development community. My experience with the development community is, let us know the rules, and we're going to live to them. That's, they want predictability. They want predictability of time, review periods, and so that they could get, because they got to, they got to put their capital, get it out of their pockets and put it to work. So, again, not to belabor this, but that is the level of intensity that we need when we review Chapter 150. So to make recommendations to the council for their consideration, that we got, we have to go through this entire code. Because again, if we believe that we have different ideas or standards as a community, we hit it here. So, um, I apologize. Want to move on, Mari?
Can I do, real quick, comment? Your, your reading of that said lot. It didn't say common areas of a development.
Yeah.
It's, it's talking about an individual lot. We don't, our covenants don't even allow anything but artificial turf. We can't have real grass in our, in our lots.
So then there will be the next challenge, and thank you for pointing that out. We have 25 planned unit developments, and they may something, say, and something entirely different. So this whole rulebook, as it applies to landscaping, may not matter because I'm supposed to pull out this book. So, again, that, that goes back to that. So one of the most complex matters in this community is we have 24, 25, 26 different set of rules for development in the town of Florence, Arizona. And that's tough, right? So, um, we always then have to go back to this as well.
Can they be streamlined?
Well, there, there, those are, these, these are, go ahead.
Those become the rules.
Those are the vested rights that we've talked about before.
That's right. When the PUD is adopted, that's where guy, if there's...
That becomes the Bible.
That becomes the, the guidebook, that's right.
And, and even in this case, you'll see some that may quite often refer to the town code. So when this one was adopted, and why Mari brought this book, is because this, in a lot of cases, references the 2000 Town of Florence zoning ordinance. So we bring this book with us, so now we're, okay, you get the point.
Just bring the whole library with you.
Yeah, I, I, I joked that we needed a dolly to bring all this over today, but yeah, it's, it's like we need a bigger vehicle. So we have, so we have a few other flow charts, Mari. So this one is the preliminary planned unit development process. So this, again, would be a new planned unit development coming into town. I've said enough.
Am I good? Okay.
So this is what Eldorado would have done, or is doing?
No.
No, Eldorado's is already in place. The Merrill Ranch PUD, already in place.
No, but, but the Eldorado is the new one on the other side.
Yes, Eldorado Holdings owns Merrill Ranch. And Merrill Ranch is already in place.
Got it.
A.J.? No?
Can I make a request here? You talk about these neighborhood meetings and the public notice. Is there any way we, as commissioners, can get notice of those?
Yes, um, we have taken, we've heard that. Apologize for the last one. I would report that no one showed up.
That's usually the case, that's...
It's often. And so, yes, we owe that to you as the commission. And Vice Mayor Adam has asked the same thing. So when we get to the point of working with the developer who's setting up a neighborhood meeting, we will be communicating that out to both the, the council as well as the commission.
Or also make sure that it's posted in case a quorum happens.
Yeah, so there's, there's a few extra steps we'll take, but absolutely, thank you for that suggestion.
Yes.
In, in the effort of time, we can all read the flow charts, so I don't know that we need to go through every block, so I'm just going to go straight to my question.
Okay.
I, I'm a little confused because in your presentation tonight, you said the preliminary plat, because it's a PUD, will not go to council for final approval.
Yes.
But it shows here that it goes to them.
Again, so this is the new PUD. Anthem Merrill Ranch was adopted in 2005 and amended in 2008. So this flow chart doesn't apply because that PUD is already in place. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and so, um, when we were reviewing the PUD, getting ready for this meeting, we recognized the, the section on page 39 that said, pre-plats are reviewed and approved by this body. And so, uh, we, we found that provision. I contacted Attorney Matisse. I said, uh, here's what it says. He goes, I concur. This is going to be a public hearing for this PUD on this night. So again, it depends on which, which book we're opening up, and it's incumbent upon staff to, whenever petition comes in, we read this thing to make sure that we're following what the town agreed to specifically on that, on that property and, or the next one. We were really close to, this, this, this was really close to being presented back on February 6th. It would have been really confusing if on the meeting agenda, we'd had a pre-plat approval for recommendation to the town council, and then the next item would have been public hearing for a pre-plat. So, um, we did avoid that. But, but you can, because again, we're having to explain, each case is different. It, I, I get it. And that's what our promise is to you. We are reviewing all of these documents when these different projects come in.
But moving forward, all new PUDs, this is the flow chart.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So we have one that's in the process right now. It just did the neighborhood meeting on this flow chart, and then they went through the technical advisory commis, committee. And so they're, they're moving through that flow chart.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Their next step is a public notice when they're ready, and then it'll come to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
So again, for the sake of time, we won't go through all these. Please review them. Know that this flow chart is trying to simplify the complexities of Chapter 150. And again, this is training, let's keep talking. The dialogue is important. The sec, so if, if, did you have anything else you want to talk about the flow charts tonight? We're good?
I can go to the, real quick. The Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't review variances. That goes to Board of Adjustments or the town council. But we just had it here just to show you one of the processes that's in our code.
Is it amended?
Yep.
So the second item on the, the agenda, Chairman, if, if, would you mind if we move to that? Okay. The second item on the agenda is, for this training session, has to do with a, a training suite that we purchased through American Planning Association. Mari has a few slides that she'd like to present.
I'm waiting for you to say something. Yeah, okay, so the American Planning Association, or the APA, provides an online training for planning officials and commissions in general. So it's separated into two different categories. They're all video presentations, but something that planning and staff, do you want to do, like, discussions as we go through the videos? So we'll bring a video to the commission, we'll watch it together, and then we can have a discussion, questions and answers afterwards, just to go through what was presented in the video.
Are you talking about these being part of a regular meeting or a separate?
Yes. So in the next ongoing meetings, March 6th, we'll do the rules and responsibilities video. March 20th, we'll do one on managing the meeting. April 3rd will be on staff reports. April 17th is comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Now, all these videos don't go over 30 minutes, so it's not going to be like a whole hour of us just watching a movie.
Can we get these ahead of time so we can watch them? Ahead of time?
We can share them in advance of the meetings. The idea of then sitting and going over them together is that we're building common understanding. We can talk about the video and, and listen to one another, but they are, they're, they would be available both for review prior to, so for hearing or taking notes. And then, and, and again, this is as much for the commission, Vice Mayor Adam, folks who may be in attendance, people watching online, is to demonstrate that we're training ourselves up, we're, we're working to learn these things. But to answer your question specifically, we can provide in advance, Commissioner.
I appreciate that because I'm slow, and I like to stop the video and write my question down. Oh, I missed the next part of the video. It's just that kind of thing. Thank you.
Commissioner, Willie?
Yeah, really, just kind of an idea for you guys to look forward. There are months that we have lows, and we cancel meetings. This would be a great opportunity, I think most of us would agree, on those nights that we don't have anything, let's have a training session. Let's use that extra meeting to our benefit. I know these kind of have to be scheduled a little bit and stuff like that, but let's go back to two meetings a month, whether we have stuff or not. If we can use it for training, that'd be awesome.
So that is how we're, good point, and that's what we're proposing here, as a calendar for the next four meetings. We, we're, as we know the load coming in, we may have an item or two that show up on one of these agendas, but by presenting this schedule, we wanted to reach out to, to, to you as a commission and say, we would like to, even if we don't have an official item on the agenda, we would like to work through this together.
Hundred percent.
So March 20th...
So March 20th might not be the meeting to do the training then because it might be kind of loaded, right? Based on what we did tonight?
Yeah, and it may, right. So, um, and again, but again, if, if we don't schedule it like this, and they, and then the petitioner comes back and says, you know, I need two more weeks, then we get back to, we canceled the meeting. We didn't talk about it. So I, I think we could-
This can be flexible, so.
Yeah, I, we're trying to be as flexible, but we're trying to also use the regularly scheduled meetings to provide these training opportunities. As Mari mentioned, um, I think the longest video in, on, on those five topics is the managing meeting, um, video, and I believe it's 30 minutes. Um, the comprehensive plan and zoning, they're, they're brought together because I think comprehensive planning in Arizona general, planning, um, and zoning ordinance, um, I think they together end up being about 19 or 20 minutes, both segments.
Is this the full extent, these four?
In addition, there, there will be five here, um, topics. The two are combined on April 17th. Um, Mari, in addition to the essential skills side, I believe there's a, there's a five additional videos.
Called Keys to Sound Action, and it's an additional five videos that based off that topic.
And in addition to that-
Because I might miss one of the sessions. I hate to miss one of these.
Well, then you don't get a certificate, sir.
I'll have to take a test later.
So, um, so, and important, right, because we're, we're talking about training. We're trying to train each other up. As we make our way through all these videos, and all these videos may not be, may not be best to be presented here. We may do some individualized training or review, but at the conclusion, right, you get a certificate, and it says to the public, they're like, hey, we're, we're, the planning commissioners here in the town of Florence. We took the time to do this training. We, we, we talked through some facilitated conversations on ways to improve and deliver for the community, and that certificate's important. I mean, it's just showing that we're taking the time to do these things. So, um, I appreciate you giving us the few minutes to, to talk through the flow charts a bit. It's been a long night, and then talk about this, this opportunity that we'll have, um, in the next couple of months.
Now, there's a- We should include our alternate too, who's too tense to come to a lot of the meetings, so.
And, and yeah, we'll make, we'll make sure.
There's a-
We won't give you a certificate back there, Les, sorry.
You have this meeting on Ma, March 3rd, Monday, March 3rd?
Well, I think it's now time for comments, Commissioner comments, or are we still?
Well, we're starting about training here. There's a meeting or a, a training session. It's called Florence Leadership Academy, Monday.
But that's something different. That's not the planning.
Yeah, that, that's a separate training that all the commissions and committees are invited to.
So, um, Commissioner, that training, um, is built on the incoming council training that was held in the last quarter and a half of 2024, um, in preparation of the new council onboarding and taking their seats up at the dais. That, that commissioner will go through all the departments in the town. Community Development and Public Works have a presentation on that schedule, I believe, on March 31st. But you'll also be hearing from all the departments, police, fire, finance, um, so it's, it's, it's more than just this commissioner training.
Got a lot of training going on scheduled here, so, okay.
Yes, sir.
Great.
And you thought you were retired, right?
I thought I was retired, yeah.
Okay, so Director's Report, or did you?
Um, as a Director's Report, um, we do have a number of final plats that have been submitted, and those reviews are underway. We have had some conversations with, um, folks looking at the, the, those commercial pads at the, the unbuilt corners, um, out at, um, Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway. We've, uh, Town Manager Walls and I, I know Mayor, um, you know, those, those conversations are, are really ramping up. There is that interest, so we're excited to report that. And other than that, there's really a number of things. I believe we have a couple items that are likely making their way to HDAC here next week, or at least, uh, soon to an HDAC meeting, um, folks looking to make some improvements on some of the buildings downtown. So, um, we are moving on, on a number of things here.
Super. Thank you very much.
Is this a place where I can ask you a question? I can't ask. I want to ask the Director. Have, have we added the new development by Eldorado on Arizona Farms to our list of all the subdivisions? It's a county one, but, you know, it still completes with our roads and everything in the town.
Commissioner Leavitt, could you repeat? Which one did you?
The Eldorado was started land moving up there by Copper Basin.
The one at the southeast corner of Arizona Farms and Felix?
No. This is, this is west of Felix, over to Copper Basin, and on the south side of Arizona Farms, Cop, Copper Basin Railroad. They're moving dirt up there right now. It's a county-approved one.
Yes, so, um, we are, that is on the map, um, and we're working with, with the folks at Pinellas County to make sure that we're, uh, aware of the, the, the PUDs and developments that they're working on. So we're, we're again trying to build that up. Again, that's going to be an important document that we share with our, uh, transporta, our, uh, the, I mentioned earlier, the update of the transportation plan. Um, so the inputs, as much as what we know is taking place here in the town, it will be those adjacent developments that are impacting the community. Um, so, um, we are keeping track of that so that we can begin sharing that with our consultants so that when they do those build-out scenarios in our transportation planning, that they're taking into account, um, those developments as well. As you know, they all impact the roads here in the town of Florence.
Thank you.
Okay, Commission members.
I just have one quick question of, of AJ. AJ, at the last meeting, Monarch, um, Mr. Gray said he would get back to you about the traffic manual, because the traffic study manual they used was 2009. He have to get back to you?
Um, he did not get back to me specifically on that question. Um, I did a bit of my own research, and I think that what ended up happening is that there, there was the 2009 manual. There's the, I believe we identified that there was an update in the manual in 2023. Uh, I think the, and I, I think that the timing of that transportation plan may have been right when that new manual is being produced. That is my investigation, um, but I do not have his response to the commission's question.
Thank you.
Please.
All right. I, I have two statements and then a question. All right. Uh, the first statement, uh, I want to just put out there is, we are the town of Florence. Whether we're north of the river or south of the river, this is the town of Florence. Tonight, the passion was Anthem at Merrill Ranch, okay? But we have to remember, it's not just about Felix Road. It's not just about Hunt Highway. It's about 287. It's about 79. It, when we're looking at this stuff, it, I just want you to understand that we are the town of Florence. It's not just because it's Anthem tonight that there's more passion behind this. It, this is the way we need to be moving as a Planning and Zoning Commission. It's about the whole picture, not just north of the river, south of the river. So I wanted to say that first. Uh, the second one, uh, is I want to clarify, in 2008, Planning and Zoning did make an adjustment to the PUD up there. But the intention of that was, when they presented it, their, uh, density was a lot less. So we were allowing them to shorten some of the yards, not to build houses, but to fit more accordingly, okay? It wasn't to, to create a higher density. That's what they're trying to do tonight. They're manipulating what happened in 2008, because I think in 2008, don't quote me, it was a long time ago. I think we were at like just shy of three units per acre. Now we're going to three and a third. So they're trying to jam a third of a house in every acre. By the time you've gone to three acres, there's an extra house, okay? So I just wanted to clarify that, because yes, we did give them some leeway in 2008, but it wasn't, they were still had larger lots. It still wasn't jamming houses in next to each other. So I wanted to clarify that point. Okay, last one is a question. Uh, AJ, I don't know how you can go about this, but after looking at the PUD tonight and looking at all these fire egress, uh, that they're putting, that they're proposing, uh, this is about Anthem. If you live west of the golf course, we have one way in, one way out. If something was to happen at Merrill Ranch in Sun City, the residents have no way out of the community whatsoever. We have one emergency escape, which is all the way over on Hunt Highway. Correct. It, we have a safety issue up there, and I'm going to throw this out there. Wildfires hit. What if the wildfire starts south of Merrill Ranch and comes our direction? We now have people that are stuck in a community that can't get out. I've approached this with Sun City homeowners. I've approached this with Polte Homes. We have a public safety issue up there. We need to be looking into this for the safety and the residence of the town of Florence on getting another egress out of that community. If you're east of, of the golf course, they have three or four. If you're south of Merrill Ranch, they have 10 egress points that they can get in and out of the community. West of the golf course, one. That, that's all they have. If there's a water main break, we're stuck. No fire truck in, no ambulance in, nothing. Well, I mean, they can get in all the way on, on Hunt Highway. So, but could we look into why they're being allowed to not complete Sun City Boulevard all the way around?
If I may?
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, at the town council meeting on Tuesday, um, the, um, map of dedication was approved by the town council. That map of dedication did dedicate to the town of Florence, uh, the balance of the right-of-way, uh, continuing, uh, Sun City Boulevard around the north end of the golf course out to Felix. Um, so that did just happen Tuesday night. I apologize for not bringing that up. That, that, that provides another access point, um, but no, I'll take your concern to Town Manager Walls. He's here. He heard it. Um, we'll talk amongst our emergency providers and, and, and look into your question. It's a good question.
Yeah, because their response is they're, they're not required to build it out until X percentage. But if they keep adding homes, the percentage is never met.
Yeah, so, um, it's, it's a good, let me look into that, and I will get back to you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
So I, I almost heard a question in the first statement that you made. Were you asking staff to look at the PUD to see what's happened with density? And based on, on your memory, showing that lower density and what they're looking at now?
It was more of a point of clarification, because it sounded like in 2008, we gave them the world, and that wasn't the intention. The intention is at the current time that they were presenting stuff, there was less density. Now they're cramming density in, so.
I, I think there's a question there somewhere.
The PUD, um, allow, um, for three, allows for 3.5 units per acre. The development agreement reinforces that, which is earlier. And this proposal is presented, I believe the gentleman from the, from Polte indicated that they were at 3.37.
Yep, okay. Okay, I have a couple. Um, with a development like this and one that we saw the other day, my eyes have a hard time looking at an exhibit that's 11 by, or eight and a half by 11. Is it possible when we pick up packets, getting 11 by 17, so we got a little bit more size?
Chairman, these aren't much easier, but yes. Um, so I, I do have an 11, 11 by 17 set here. If it is the pleasure of the commission, we can absolutely prepare that for all of you. Um, it, it's, it's not much more difficult for us to do that for you.
Well, and I, I don't want all the sheets. I just want that, those index sheets so that I can find my way around the development without a magnifying glass. That'd be great.
I have to bring them up on- I have to bring them up on my computer and then zoom in so I can read stuff. I mean, that's what I do.
And this is 11 by 17. You're going to be able to find the index sheet. It's just a, it's just all black ink.
And like-
It's hard to read. I understand.
Those would be great.
Do you have a plotter so we can get a 48 by 36?
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just joking.
No, we do. And, and seriously though, if, if, if we're struggling at that level because there is the amount of detail, I, I would, I would ask that you not ask us to prepare five set of plans, but if, if it is of value to have one full set of planning, dot, plans here at the meeting, and we can, you know, and we can share them, or you can find something you may have a question on, that's absolutely something we can do.
Well, here, you can bring it up on the screen, and, and Marty can typically enlarge it and whatnot, which is cool. It's just that when I'm trying to review it, I'm having a hard time. And some of the stuff, I always come down and get a printed packet, because for me, it's easier to flip than try to scroll through a computer screen. Drives me crazy.
Yeah. We will do what you ask us, and if you need a larger set of plans, they will be printed out.
At least, the, the sheet one that typically shows the whole thing, that would be awesome. I, I really appreciate that one. Um, second thing, as I'm sitting here thinking and about what's happening and developments that are being brought up and whatnot, I almost envisioned the perfect storm happening here with a traffic problem. With what we heard the other day with the counties and the towns' plans on Hunt Highway, and then with these developments happening, we could essentially shut down traffic in this area and get a black eye like we've never had before. I mean, we would lose all trust of the community if we did that, so hopefully somebody's looking really carefully at traffic movements during these construction phases.
There are, um, many folks looking at that. Um, I did attend a meeting o, over at Pinellas County in the Development Services Building, uh, talking about, um, how they see Hunt Highway progressing from Magma down to Franklin. We know we have the project at Addaway and Hunt. We have to balance in these developments. Folks are aware of, you know, there, there is that consideration, and, um, there's nothing worse than pushing a detour route into a detour route. So, um, the, these, this level of coordination is going to be very important in the next five to 10 years here in Florence.
Absolutely. Okay. I, I asked the, the developer a question about industrial versus municipal, and as far as the, the quality of what they're building for water and wastewater stuff. I, I, I would suggest that when these plans are brought to the town, that we have an outside third party that's not connected to the developer. Look at them to make sure that what we're getting is a truly municipal standard. Because the development, the developer wants to make money. He wants it built quick and dirty and easy, because once he signs it over to us, it's off his hands. But we want something that's going to last for 50 years.
Director Gill is, is playing a, a big role in the review of those documents and plans set, um, so yes. And, and your question was heard, um, so my hope is to have a conversation with, with, with Tom and, 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 you know, answer some of the, because I know you have a lot of very detailed questions there, so I, I think he's going to be best served to help answer some of those questions for you and for the members of the commission.
Sometimes it's helpful to have someone who designs these things all the time, an outside third party, look at them and say, yeah, kind of the QA QC, value engineering type stuff. Parking. This gets back to the concern I have with the downtown area. If, and this is hypothetical, if Olive Garden were to come in right now and say, hey, we like that lot in the downtown. We'd love to come in, and then, but we need parking. And it seems like our strategy right now is all on-street parking, which basically is going to leave not much happening in the downtown. And I've heard that the thought is we would shuttle people in from a, a further parking lot. That's not going to work. And, and I only hearken back to, um, my experience with town of Gilbert, that when I went to work there, there was that old downtown area that for the life of me looks exactly like what we have here. And a very wise town manager that went out, and when things happened, he started buying up parcels. And so there is, there is close parking and tremendous activity there that has become an economic boon for that town and a jewel. And I'm really concerned that our downtown area is going to be throttled when anybody tries to do anything and say, well, we don't have any parking. Is there a possibility of doing a parking study?
I, uh, I, I do not want to steal Vice Mayor Adam's thunder here. But I, but, but I know that, um, I know that, um, likely this may come up in the upcoming town council workshop.
So it, it, of course, is incorporated into the strategy, but there have been many discussions, and the council has advised the town manager to keep an eye out. We are considering that. I don't know if anyone's aware of the large parking lot in back of True Value that everyone forgets about. It is one block off of Main Street, and my personal opinion, I'm only one council, is I, I will never- is I will never give up prime-time Main Street property for a parking lot, right? It's too valuable to have a store, a restaurant, whatever. And I think we forget, we, our, our whole downtown district is only five blocks. You have a parking lot one block off Main Street. Okay, you have to walk a couple of blocks. What is the big deal, right? I mean, people talk like it's the far side of the moon. We understand the parking situation, but I'm not so sure it's as dire as everyone's saying. There are signs all over, anywhere you can put a sign to that parking lot, but no one reads them. Because I went out there to look and see, are we doing an adequate job? And we have signs there. So partially, you'll notice Keith Ray or whoever the promoter is for the event, we're asking them to advertise and give a map to that parking lot, okay? So that has offloaded quite a lot. I know because I used to get people parking by my house. I don't see it so much anymore because they're using that parking lot. So understood, parking is going to be a bigger issue, but right now, we do have parking.
And the town controls that parking, parking lot? That is town-owned property? Awesome. Great. Yeah, just have to look and see if we need to go multi-level or something.
And again, it goes into the overall plan, right? I mean, I don't want to willy-nilly, grab empty space and make it a parking lot, right? We ought to have a strategy, our favorite word, for how and where we place it. And we do have a redevelopment plan. At some point, we are expecting the south end of town to get developed as well, so it all has to come together.
I'm just hoping we're looking real far-sighted and not constricting that downtown because basic people are lazy.
You're right.
If they can't drive within a hundred yards of it, they're not going to go, you know? It's just way, it's the way we are. So, okay, get off my soapbox on that one. With that, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Struggled with the second on that one. I have a motion from
Thank you.
Council, from Commissioner Willie, and a second from our vice chair. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.